I'd like to call this meeting the Town of Rondell Planning Board Order. I believe that the agenda stands as printed. We've all received the April 1st and April 15 minutes. Does everyone have a chance to come over?
Yes.
Could I hear a motion to approve?
Sure.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. One thing I'll just let you on, I hope you all got to receive. We have a sign-off now on the Stormwater Advance Report for Sub-Common, the Winbridge Road property. I had spoken with our attorney, Mr. Lyons. He is still waiting to receive a lease to review, so that's had an opening, still has yet to service. So we're still on high list for that one. Does anyone else have anything we should do, share with us?
I approve the meeting.
Oh, yes. Could we motion to approve Jim's meeting now?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Actually, one of the referrals is a little complicated. Okay, what we can certainly do is, the one for Rock Ledge, they are applying to the ZVA to commit six units, condominium units, to the manor house, whereas four is the unit at this point in time. But they are requesting six, and rather than put the four in the chapel of the stone barn, which they were going to do, they are asking to just put two there, transfer two of them to the stone barn to the manor house. Our notes, we've discussed this, I believe, in the past. Ideally, a number of us felt that that was actually a better solution to the problem of increasing the number of units, but it basically reduces any changes to the stone chapel to a much smaller tradition. You don't have to put much parking there, things of that sort, and it makes better use of the space within the manor house. There would be no external changes to that, anything of that sort. Normally, what we do is we say, we obviously know zoning or planning problems here. A couple of us felt, and it's up to all of us, that in this particular instance, that we feel that this would be a very good variance to grant, because it would basically, from the exterior and from the street and things like that, it would minimize the changes to these historic structures on the property. So the thought was to recommend that the ZVA actually approve this variance. So what do you all think?
I agree.
Does it make sense?
So it's not gonna...
What irrecuses we don't approve?
So making four units in the other one is not going to change that one, did I say?
Right. Basically, they'll go with two units in the chapel, the stone barn, and six units in the main house, because there's more than adequate room in the manor house for six units.
So there's no major changes to the manor house, and fewer changes to the chapel?
Correct, correct.
Sounds like a good idea.
I'd like to make that motion.
Actually, I have a language here.
Oh, yes. And I'll take off my glasses, okay.
The Town of Rondell Planning Board reviewed the zoning report, feels every variance referral for Hudson Valley Land House on May 6, 2019, regarding the increasing number of dwelling units or adaptive reuse, from four dwelling units to six dwellings in the manor house. The planning board recommends the ZVA grant the variance as the transfer of two units to the manor house from the stone barn maintains to a greater extent. The exterior features of the stone barn reduces the denture vision impact, which has been a concern of neighbors, reduces parking with the stone barn, or effectively utilizes the adaptive reuse space that the manor house offers, and overall provides a positive impact to proposed plans. Could I hear a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good, thank you.
Michael, I have a question.
Yes.
We can get a variance to do that, and change it out from what's required in that, for that zone. Why can't we get a variance so we don't have to do that gerrymandered lot division?
Well, that's in the subdivision law, and I don't, I'm not, no, it isn't zoning law.
It's a density law.
It's a density economics issue. I honestly don't know. I think it'd be more complicated than that. I think it's something we'd have to, you know, perhaps speak to our attorney. I'm not in t- I usually can change this, but it might be more effective we do it as a zoning amendment, recognizing that that way of permitting increased density is perhaps not the most effective when you're doing historic properties and adaptive reuse, something like that. But it's really something to look into. It does seem like a bit of a...
It's a crazy lot line to leave on the ground, you know, and electric and all that, and it just seems like it's going to lead to future problems down the road, so.
And it results in the same density that you're in now.
Yeah, I mean, so they qualify based on that, so once they do that, you know...
And that's really not why you're doing the thing, you're doing it to try to preserve historic structures.
Right.
You can see that. I think it's something to look into, but I do feel it's a bit of a... Yeah, it's a gerrymandering they're doing, yeah.
It is complex.
It is complex, yeah. Oh, yeah, it all, under the current law, yeah, probably it all grows, but perhaps there's a more straightforward, simpler process as it be used.
But it's also the applicant's request.
Yes, oh, yes.
We didn't tell them.
Oh, no, not at all.
It was his decision.
Yeah, absolutely.
No, but it was his decision, based on, that's how, the only way he could get the maximum density on those properties, so.
Alrighty, I think we're ready for our first public hearing. This is Girl Next Door, Sue C. I think we have a little...
That was going to be pushed to the next meeting.
It is, but that's why we have to do that tonight, because we didn't schedule the public hearing tonight, so we're going to explain what we're doing.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you wanted me to explain.
Well, you just wanted to get up, and so if I don't explain it properly, you will...
I'd be happy to.
You can chime in.
So, what we're going to do, I actually have a board, I'd love to show you. I thought I was explaining this at 6:55.
Okay, no, you're not explaining that now. What we're explaining is...
The greenhouse.
Is that Sue has requested she can't be here tonight or at the next meeting. She wanted to be available to answer questions and things like that. So, rather, and there was another application to work on the house and a little studio behind the house across the street from where the greenhouse is going to go, but there's a violation on that property, so we were not able to accept that application, but that's coming up later tonight for us to accept. It was requested, and I think it makes good sense, since there are all three properties, all three particular buildings are same ownership and right next door to each other, to have one public hearing, you know, one notification, one process such as that, rather than do this. So the public hearing for tonight was not noticed, therefore legally, it will not be held. What we're going to do tonight is when this application, the violation has now been cleared up, is proper for us, we'll be in a position to accept that application, to set up the public hearing, and all three buildings will then be subject to that public hearing, so that everyone just has to come once for that.
I apologize, I didn't realize you wanted me to explain that. I thought we were just involved with it.
Well, I just thought, just when I screwed it up, you could, you know, correct me.
Well, you did it so hard to feel it.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, you did it. I was like, oh, no, it's 6:55. Perfect.
So does everyone on the planning board understand what we're doing?
What were the violations?
There was the studio behind the main house, I believe, and the kitchen, and it was basically structured as an accessory dwelling without special use of the site plan. So it had to be returned to just an accessory structure.
But it was, then we have a...
Which has happened. The planning department went up and inspected it and certified it as a DSD, it's no longer an accessory dwelling. And that was the violation, so it has been cleared up. So we would be in a position now to accept the application, we weren't in a position to accept the last meeting for the house.
Has it changed from an accessory structure to an accessory dwelling? What's the difference?
Well, it no longer has a kitchen. In an accessory dwelling here, it has to be a totally self-contained habitable unit with all the facilities for, you know, daily life. So that's what we're going to do. I hope that that makes sense for everybody. And then Eric and I will be doing the site visit for all three buildings once we get that set up.
And only two properties?
Correct, correct. Okay, so, since we're moving along right now, our next public hearing is the Children's Medical Group, on the front row. Do you want to go in for the do that, and add the, what we do the other, and you accept the other? You don't want to do the other?
I don't like that. I have time, sir.
What do you, what do you... I haven't been confused, the board.
No, I like it.
Excellent, that's what we can do, that's what we will do. Thank you. Do you need this?
No.
Take it away.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Tickleman, Tickleman Architecture. With me is the project architect, Chris Mansfield. We've continued the work that we discussed with you last time we were here, in terms of pursuing all the work required from the Dutchess County Health Department. There've been site meetings with members of your board. We've also made some changes to the, to the project, as per your request, adding some trees along Buck Road, and also, we've added a couple of small light fixtures on the parking lot to just have some modest illumination in the rare time that the practice is open in the evenings, just to make it a bit more safe. We've modified the fence around the children's playground area to make it a little bit more transparent, so that you can see, see it before it was an opaque fence. And there's also been some additional landscaping put throughout the front of the building in terms of flower beds and such. We have a model, if you want, we can show that 3D model, like we did last time, is out there. Is that the whole thing? That's it. Well, Chris, is work announced, or anything that, you know, I can answer in terms of any questions the board may have?
There's some confusion about, in our documentation, about, is the loading dock existing and it's going to be covered in, or is it going to be adding a new loading dock?
Thanks for the question. There is an existing loading dock in this area of the building right here, and we're enclosing that. We don't need it as a loading dock, so that's going to be used as a mechanical room that we're adding onto the building. Thank you.
Any other questions at the moment? So we're just awaiting further presentation.
Sure, sorry, nothing to lay on, right?
That's okay.
One other question?
Yes.
Do you know what the plantings will be in front of the building?
In regards to the new tree trees?
I think it might be.
In regards to the new trees?
Well, right in front of the building, it's like, perhaps there are shrubs, right?
Yeah, yeah, I have a planting schedule here, I can, I can...
Again, the project, just as a recap, there are no changes to the form of the building other than the enclosure of the loading dock, and then there's a new entry, there's a new entry addition to the front of the building to make it a little bit more inviting and open. It, it is a covered walkway to, you know, get into the waiting area, which is in here. You'll see that clearly in the virtual reality model of, you know, of the building itself. We're coloring the building differently to make it a little bit more appealing than the current color of the structure. But the idea was really to, it's really an internal adaptive reuse to the structure, and you try to keep, there are really no changes to the parking lot, there's no changes other than we're restriping it, you know, because it's not striped currently and things like that, but... Yeah. Yeah. That works. Yeah, that's okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So to answer your question on the plantings, it's an older bush on the side, on the there, about two inches on the bottom line there.
You'll see them on the model, the... Again, the addition in the front is, as I described before, but the goal was to bring natural light into the, into the waiting area, and also to make that space more pleasant. The, you know, the planting in the front is simple, and, you know, again, it's just refinishing the outside so it has a little bit nicer appeal, as well on a different color palette, and the building itself is going to be, you know, completely redone, 100%, inside. New mechanical, electrical systems in there, and then the architect is established so that the Children's Medical Group's office is nicely run, and, you know, we have efficient and also have some nice spaces for patients.
What sort of medicines can we go on?
What sort of medicines?
I mean, what sort of, I mean, surgeries, or is it going to be...
It's the Children's Medical.
It's the Children's Medical.
Yeah, what do we do?
Pediatrics, I'm Jake Hunter, pediatrician, president of Children's Medical Group, and we currently have an office in my backyard, we'll be moving to there. We take care of well and sick children. No surgeries or any procedures are done in there.
No labs, or anything like that?
Well, we have, you know, the standard lab that would be in any kind of a, any kind of a medical office. We do minor blood testing, urine testing, and so forth.
Again, one of the ideas which, you know, came from Dr. Fanner, was to have a garden for the children, so that hasn't been designed yet, but you'll be able to, in good weather, to be able to come into the waiting room and then go outside while you're waiting for your appointment, or if you come with brothers and sisters and somebody's in bed having an appointment, they can go outside and, you know, so again, that's what the plan is for that wrecking of the fenced area. Anything else I can help with?
Do you want to get the site visit for the planning board?
Woody, Edna, and Edith.
Who'd they like to report on their plantings?
I think that the applicant's been very responsive to suggestions made by the planning board when they were last year, and also on site. The trees along the road and the plantings in front, I think, help to soften the appearance of the building, and the somewhat more transparent fence, I think was a good move. I haven't yet seen what you're planning related on the parking area. Do you have something to show on that?
We do. So we have two shorter light poles, no, two significant height, the 12.
The 12 feet. Again, the idea was, we were told in our first meetings, about some of the philosophy of the board was to keep the dark sky, so the idea here was to really just keep it as a, as a way just to make it safer.
Woody, you have anything to add?
No, I completely concur. I think it's an excellent approach to the building. I see no problems at all, and if anything, it will be a plus to the network as opposed to what it is now, is, it's not that bad now. Is the exterior signlet, the sign at the entrance?
Yes, the, go ahead.
So our last meeting, the board had requested that we remove the uplighting from that, so we did. There's a code detail on the top of the sign that encases an LED that shines down.
And where's the fixture mounted?
So it would be an LED light strip, I'll show you. It's going to be underneath this sort of code here.
Oh, okay.
It's shining down as a tape, LED tape.
See, you won't see the source.
Could you go back to the garden for a minute, or the children's garden? I'm wondering what's planned for that. Is that to be a vegetable garden, or a flower garden?
More of a, more of a, just...
Kindergarten?
Yeah, kindergarten, more exploration, maybe a few things that kids can climb on low level, things I don't want, anything anybody can fall off of, nothing that would be higher than when they fall off my examining table. And, but just more, and the concept is still just coming along right now, but what it is, is an extension outside of the waiting room to be able to let kids go out, run, you know, play a little bit. I think it makes the, the whole concept more child-friendly that way, and a little bit more of an outdoors thing, I think in keeping with the community concept.
I have a suggestion, and it's nothing but a suggestion. I sense it would be really nice to have a tree somehow giving a little shade to that. I don't know what it is, or where it would go exactly, but...
Not a bad suggestion. Again, we haven't put the effort in yet, and so we'll take that into mind as a landmark.
As a child, so.
Yes. Something.
Did the CAD, um...
Yeah.
Yes.
Leonora did that.
I bet that's you.
Okay. It's going to be real short. Okay. Okay, so that was Leonora did that site visit, and we didn't find any conflicts, so.
Thank you. Any other questions at the moment, comments, questions from the public on this? Yes?
I have one more question.
We have to ask you to come up and talk to the board. Let us know who you are.
I'm on garden CAD. I just have a question about the foundation planting. Did you say that was a vulgary mistake there? It's, I think it's been classified as an invasive species, and you probably can't put that in your plan. I don't think you can put it in the ground anymore. Just something to know.
So we've aired it in that, so...
It's probably a good alternative. Any other questions or public comments? Alright, thank you. Could I hear a motion to approve the public hearing? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good, ahead of resolution. The Town of Rondell Planning Board, if I access follows, in the application by Children's Medical Group for site plan approval and signage under Town Code J. 125, Section 12572 and 12573 respectively, at 5 Hook Road, in the Business Park, zoning district, in the local water company utilization area, in the Transgender Historic Landmarks District, and local on the scenic road, Hook Road. All is depicted and described in application package and plan sheets by Tickleman Architecture dated 5/6/19. One reaffirms proposed actions type 2 under Seager, for which board dated in the vanguard of the year is precluded. Based upon the view of submitted information including reports from planning board members, CAD, WAC members on their site visit to the project property, finds the proposed work is consistent with the objective stated in Chapter 125 and Chapter 120. With regards to the policies with the town's LWRP, finds the proposed actions as depicted and are described in the revoked reference submissions are consistent with those policies. With respect to the sign application, finds the proposed signage meets the requirements of Section 12537 and approves the sign application subject to site plan approval. With respect to the application for site plan approval, finds the proposed work and intended use to be consistent with Town Code J. 125, 12572, approves the application including some of the application materials and plan sheets by application actors in the plan sheets by Tickleman Architecture dated 5/6/19. Be authorized as the planning board chair to stamp and sign the above cited site plan upon the applicant's satisfaction of below conditions and the requirements within six calendar months of the adoption of the resolution. Submission of the above cited site plan in the form and number specified in Town Code J. 125-78B, except as may be modified to a lesser note by the chair in consideration of filing and distribution requirements, including thereupon all required stamps, seals, and certifications. Due payment of any outstanding fees and or reversible amounts due to Town of Rondell related to reviewing processing of the application subject to this resolution. Three, receipt of approved, authorized, authorizations, or certifications required there and or from any other town, county, state, or other agency as required to undertake proposed actions. Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? I'll poll the board. Kathy?
Aye.
Woody?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
And then go to I. So, as soon as you get your final site plan with all the necessary data on it, to me, so I can stamp and sign, we're going to be in a position to go through and proceed with the development project.
Well, thank you very much. This has been a professional, thoughtful process, and we appreciate it very much.
Is it the same public sheet, is that what you're saying? Because that's very, that's very difficult. Beautiful. I'm not a guy. After all. I think one of the... The red one is a little bit... Looking at it, I'm surprised. But it's only a red shirt.
This is Hudson Valley Country LLC, Wayne Pendle, planning of Mount Watson Road, site and renovation of Histon Senior Family Drive.
So, this is a house, just a house, 28 Mount Rudson Road. All over the name of Hudson Valley Country, I will see in the owners are Roger Boddys here with me this evening, and Brian Engel. This house has sat empty and derelict for a number of years. Bit by bit, everything's been stripped out of the inside, even before Roger and Brian acquired it, which sort of gave me the opportunity to go ahead and do a renovation inside. The proposed changes to the exterior are actually fairly modest. Want to replace an existing front porch, with some sort of open metal work, support columns with a somewhat more contemporary looking porch, a little more in the style of the sort of mid-century modern that these ranch houses sort of derive from. But essentially keeping, not changing the footprint of the house at all, putting some larger windows on it on the back, putting a larger deck or place a smaller deck that was there at one time, and making a more accessible walkway from the driveway, which is sort of a story down, up to the front door, and I didn't have to kind of scale the bank. But the other, the other changes proposed are really all internal. So essentially, we're rehabbing the house, but it's before this board, because it's on a scenic road, now Rudson Road, and behind the property is the Hudson River National Store of Landmark District, which is actually an area that's a wetland, and that continues across all the way, that district continues all the way to the river. But because we're adjoining property to the district and we're on a scenic road, this board has to review and approve any changes proposed to properties along that road. There is, a trellis shown here, projected from the garage, I think the owners are not going to put that there, I think that they are concerned that when the doors are open, it's going to cut light a little bit, and we spoke a little bit at the last meeting about lighting, the lighting proposed, it's a couple of the barn-style down lamps, just like down lamps, over the doors, set into the post, the deck at the back, the sort of inset step lights, it would be very low voltage and reflect light back to the house. And then in the roof of the front porch, recessed ceiling LED light there just to light that, that area there. But that's pretty much the extent of exterior lights. There are two existing lights in brick piers out at the edge of the road where the driveway comes in, and Roger told me that they would like to retain those, perhaps find a more attractive fixture, but he understands they would need to be downlights, and they would also be, now that everything's gone to LED, they're all pretty, pretty low-level lighting, and it's very efficient. But that's really the substance of the project, and I'm happy to answer questions from the board with public. We had a site visit, and Eric and Kathy were there, along with the representative of the CAD. Kathy, Kathy didn't have a question, though.
It was false, so we didn't know.
So would Eric and Kathy like to give their impressions?
Kathy would like me to give my impression.
John, Eric.
Yeah, as Warren said, the changes are minimal, but it's doing nothing but enhancing
As Warren said, the, the changes are minimal, but it's doing nothing but enhancing the scenicity, if I may use the word, of the road. So I think it's a great thing that's happening that, you know, the place has been, if not nice or at least a little depressing to go by, and I go by it often, so I'm very glad to see that. So it's, I think it's all, it's all good. And, you know, the, the improvements, I mean, the changes to the outside are just nothing but improvements. You will see the decks slightly from, from the road, but only slightly, and it's certainly not a, a kind of major change, so.
Would you care to add anything to that?
I, I would. Thank you very much, gentlemen, because clearly this was a, a place that needed attention. I think this is sensitive and smart and it's a wonderful addition, so thank you very much.
Would the CAD like to comment?
Again, we didn't see any conflicts. I'll back up some. Felt that all the additions and changes on the outside were completely in keeping with the existing structures and the landscape. And that it looks nice.
Thank you. Any questions from members of the board? Questions or comments from members of the board? Yes.
Do you want to get up?
Yeah, we do. You'll be immortalized.
I'm Pat Coon, I'm at 30, Mount Rudson Road. I have one question and one compliment. I am thrilled, I've lived in my house for 34 years and I've seen that house deteriorate. And I'm so thrilled that somebody's going to love that house again. And I thank the board and I especially thank my new neighbors. Currently, there's a light between those two windows.
On the exterior?
Yeah, on the exterior.
Okay, that one's here.
Okay, that's all I have. That's it, simple. Congratulations.
Any other comments?
Warren, I didn't see a copy of the lighting you're proposing.
Right, we were just talking about achieving, I have to get you this.
If you could just keep it so we have it in file.
I will, okay.
Any other comments? Could I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
No.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. As luck would have it, we have a resolution. Surprise, surprise. The town of Ryman Planning Board hereby access follows and the application by Hudson Valley Country LLC, Roger Bland, and Brian Engel for site plan approval on the town code chapter 12572 and 28 Mount Rudson Road. We reaffirm proposed action as type 2 under seater for which board in the environment required review is precluded. Based upon the submitted information including reports from the planning board members and the CAD, WRC members on their site visit to property finds the proposed work is consistent with the objective stated in chapter 125 and chapter 120. With regards to the policies of the town's LWRP finds the proposed actions as depicted and are described in the revocative submissions are consistent with those policies. With respect to the application for site plan approval finds the proposed work and intended use to be consistent with town code chapter 125-72 and include the application inclusive of the application materials and plan sheets by Warren Jupplesworth Architects LLC dated November 16, 2018, subject to the following. Request that the applicant provide an example of the code compliant exterior lighting to be installed on the hall prior to stamp and sign as referenced above, as referenced below, so the information is contained in the town project form. Be authorized, planning board chair, to stamp and sign the above cited site plan on the applicant's satisfaction, below conditions and the requirements within six calendar months of the adoption of the resolution. Submission of above cited site plan in the form and number specified in the town chapter 125-78D. Paying of any outstanding fees and or reversible amounts due to town project related to the review and processing of application subject to this resolution. Receive of all approvals, authorizations, or certifications required herein, both community, or the town, county, state, or other agency as required to undertake the proposed actions. Could I have a motion to approve?
No.
Second?
Second.
I will hold the board. Edna?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Woody?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
And then I.
Warren fully assumed that options, either you have it or you won?
The only option now.
Thank you. Okay, final public hearing. Brian and Susan Rowan, 5 Orchard Drive, site plan review and approval because of existing barn shed on same footprint.
All right, okay, I'm Warren Smith and I'm representing Brian and Susan Rowan, Mike Lifford, 55 Orchard Drive. This is an application to replace an existing barn slash shed, especially on the side of the house, on the side of the Corning Street, with a, with a replacement shed that will sit on same footprint. Not getting larger in size and be easily the same, but they want to raise the roof, so they have the ability to stand upstairs. Right now, the dotted line here represents the roof, so it's really just a very low attic. Their thought is if they're going to rebuild this building, because it's fairly expensive proposition, they might as well be able to stand upstairs. So you see here, there's a door, a little balcony in the back, so that's the height. So we're basically proposing to raise the ridge six foot, three and a half inches, which is going to obviously change proportions of the building. But other than that, there'll still be an entrance from the house side, which is the east side into the lower level workshop area, a door that accesses a stair that goes to the upper level. And upstairs, because of the eaves coming down, it's sort of a cruciform space. Going to be closet, it's really storage, there's only going to be electricity in the building, no plumbing. There's no intention to use it as any kind of accessory dwelling or even an office. It's really just, if we're going to rebuild it, let's give it a little more utility upstairs. And a proposed balcony on the west side looking toward the river. There were some other drawings, including, I think I sent you a, a photo on my phone, which helps, why don't we look at that one? Helps understand. This is looking down Corning Street from above the intersection with Orchard. This is the existing house that Brian and Susan have there, 55, and this is the existing shed. She was sort of a dark red siding, green roof, and fairly poor condition. We reviewed the records of the historic district and that building is not even listed on the property cards from the year before it was done, back in the late 70s, early 80s. So it's non-contributing and the State Historic Preservation Office indicated that they had no objection taken down and hope that it's replaceable. We're keeping with the, the house and the immediate surroundings. So the next image, photo on my thigh, shows the proposed building here, replacing it, which again is has a steeper roof, the same footprint, and it's giving Brian some a little more utility in the structure. So that's sort of a before and after, as you will, of that, of that proposal. And Brian and Susan are here, so I don't know if you want to chime in and add anything at this point, or?
I certainly will answer any questions that the board may have or the public may have.
What sort of roofing materials?
It's going to be architectural asphalt.
Who did the site visit for this one?
Melody and Edna did.
I took some photos while I was there and they're on both sides of this page. So on the top photo, you can see the existing barn, a close-up of the existing barn. And then below that, you can see the house. And what we were told on site is that the colors of the new structure would be similar to the house, which is a very light gray, I believe, with white trim. The, if you could go to the new barn, you can see that image on the screen.
Right.
And now the other one that shows the whole new structure.
Oh, just the, the part section?
No, it just had a red around there.
The red around.
Of the new structure. Yeah, I just wanted to make the point that the new structure will look, will feel more massive than the existing barn because of the steeper roof, which you said is about six feet higher. And the dormer.
Right.
I don't, I'm not saying that that's an issue or a problem, but it is certainly a fact.
Yes.
On the reverse side of my set of photos, you will see a retaining wall that is on the west and the south sides of the existing structure, which will need, as we discussed on site, to be completely taken down and restored. Is that correct, Warren?
Well, so one of the things we discussed on site is whether we can move the building slightly to, because we obviously don't want to undermine the retaining wall or disturb the neighbor's garage. And they indicated there was a set that, existing set that could be in the house and the barn that we don't want to disturb. Brian has told me that he actually thinks he can move the building three feet from the west property line to minimize disturbing the existing retaining walls. In fact, we can even use the walls as a form against which to pour a new foundation, but certainly we have no desire to undermine, either for Brian's, Susan's sake, or the neighbor's sake, the existing walls are just sort of a series, forward next to each other as it steps down a hill. So that's the thought there. We also discussed whether the building could be moved back slightly from the south property line where there's a retaining wall to be managed. Brian confirmed that he does want to rebuild that retaining wall and, and make it more attractive in the process. Whether we could also move the building a foot or two away from that to the north, I think they're open to doing that. It's, as you know, it's a very tight site, obviously, because everything in Mike Lifford is. And we want to minimize disturbance to the existing structures, but the ten is to rebuild the retaining wall along the street. If I mispoke, please.
By moving that building up to the east, off the retaining wall?
Can you go up to the microphone and hear what you're saying?
Thank you much for having us. I'm moving the building up from the west three feet to the east allows us to, in future, we need repairs that we have some room to work with, because right now it's sitting on just in of the retaining wall that's part of the garage, the property next door. And also in doing that, we should be able to put the foundation and footings in where we don't disrupt the existing retaining wall, but actually can take a lot of pressure off it because we got a new structure going in just to the east of it. So that should eliminate a lot of problems in the future with that, that retaining wall that's there. Also moving it, the retaining wall off the street needs to be replaced. There's a well there that was covered up that was known about, that's incorporated to that retaining wall that's on the south side. That needs to be built, taken care of, and then a new retaining wall put up. And we're, we're thinking of a, a stone beside on the retaining wall that we will put back up.
So to be clear, I'm looking at this bottom photo here, you can see that the barn and this wall is right on top of the neighbor's garage, very, very close to the neighbor's garage.
Yes.
So are we, are you talking about restoring this retaining wall or moving the barn so you don't have to do anything to reach the retaining wall?
If I remove the barn, I can put in a new foundation that would not disrupt the existing retaining wall that's there. Of course, if we got into it, it's a retaining wall, it's not a big deal. But something new to be repaired to make it, that is certain.
How far is building off the retaining wall now?
It's almost right on about eight feet.
And this will be a slab on grade, on slab on grade, footings, how would you do this? Footings, footings to blow for us?
Yes.
And then slab on?
Well, I was going to talk to Warren, but I'm, I'm really looking for a structural slab on the, to make, you know, to just be, to stay in place. Give it a little more sturdyness as compared to just a slab on grade.
Well, it would be structural, I have reinforcing in that.
Just a little beefier slab that doesn't, isn't liable to crack this and.
Oh, you're going to put steel in it, you're going to?
Yeah, rebar better, just.
I'm going to, I'm going to.
And your report? And this is, is this going to be answered?
Eric, I think I can conclude.
Oh, sorry.
Melody, you might want to pick up on this. There was some conversation on site about a possible need for some fetal decisions depending upon what was found after demolition.
Well, we, well, yes, when we get to that, we, we were concerned about this retaining wall because as we maybe will pick up, there's a lot of shrubs and woody growth here, so.
Because that's the horizon along the street.
What's along the street. So, you know, we did have concern about the stability of that whole section once those come out. And we opened up a dialogue around, you know, this, whatever we decide, that it may, there may be changes to it once you begin to do the work physically on the property. There are parts that just don't look all that stable right now. So I don't know where we go with that, but that was certainly noticeable. We brought up the question of where the water goes and we talked about gutters. Have you made any further decisions about that?
So I discussed that with Brian, I told him the thought that there's that small area grass patch just to the north of the structure. And we could channel water there as opposed to just dump it back toward the house.
Or so that it runs down the street, which is the, and the pitch it to.
It will eventually work its way towards, yeah.
Yeah, but it'll be on the property, so.
Okay.
And just, I'm sorry, no, just go back to the retaining wall. That has to be replaced with proper retaining wall, which because there's a well just inside it.
Was that, is the well noted on the plans? I'm not recalling.
No, it wasn't located in the field, it's just, as they've been, working with the area, they've discovered things that, I'm not going to, it's not an active well, it's just a little, you know.
Okay.
And to give you a little history on myself, I've been in construction for over thirty-five years, so. So if you look at the house, the way it's being done, it's being done.
Oh, that was just lovely, you told a question.
And everything, everything is going to be done correctly and properly and usually.
And remind me again of flooring on the inside of the building? Is there, is it just gravel?
Well, actually, Brian gave you like a slab on the ground, on the grade level and just put the floor up there.
Will that be insulated?
No, no, it's not going to do that.
But it will, it will be heated inside.
Yeah, no, as far as welding's like, yeah, just, I was thinking of just the area heaters that punch through the wall and they just get some heat. I don't need to keep it up to like a 55 to 60 degree range, so that's where it would be designed to do. And they're just going to be through the wall heaters that are, you know, on a cold state, it's turned off.
I just, I'm wondering, have you had a conversation with the neighbor who owns the garage? Because since you're right above his garage.
Yeah, and I did call them and, and mentioned that there might be an issue and they're, it might be slightly on our property, which is not a problem for us. I, I'm thinking with what I'm seeing and knowing how it's built, that we can probably put our, our foundation in without disrupting that retaining wall in any way. And then that will become their problem in the future if something happens to it. But if it was something minor or we had it fixed and make it right, then of course we would work with them to make sure.
Is the retaining wall on their property?
Both, it's like two retaining walls side by side.
Meeting each other.
Yes.
So I think we can leave the existing alone and not, by moving the house, how do you not house, but the barn for you to leave? And that also get, again, gives me, gives us room if we have to paint it in the back or work on it, then we have some more room to work on rather than have to work off the roof of the garage to do it.
Warren, when you're doing the foundation, I assume, if everything comes down, the retaining wall along the street is, is the next step then to put in something to secure that before you go forward trying to pour the foundation for the barn, for the barn shed, just to make sure that nothing shifts?
Yeah, I would use best practice with the engineers involved in the areas to, you know, determine how that's going to happen.
Is this, is this sort of a typical front porch sites rock over there?
Well, it's kind of a rocker play and I don't know the basement of your house there. Well, it's kind of a rocker play, and I don't know the basement of your house there.
It's solid, shell.
It's right on shell, yeah, so it's probably a combination of both. My notice of the retaining wall on the street should actually be left until later so we're not putting something in and then disturbing it as we're working elsewhere on the site. But there could certainly be some temporary barriers and, you know, so fence and hay dales are going to intercept any water from the property. But that, that retaining wall, I don't think is going to be impacted by the building, you know, directly because we're not sitting right on it, but it definitely is in poor shape. And Melody, and there's some very large shrubs growing out of it, and if you try to remove them, the whole wall would come with it, I think, so.
I was just going to say that, David.
Warren?
Yeah.
Isn't there, don't they meet? Am I looking at a corner?
The retaining wall does meet at the corner, but the building, the building is set back from the street there.
Yeah. And that, that will, it'll be tied in properly with rebar and taking out some of the stone block and pushing it back in, you know, so that it's solid and functional as far as the retaining wall.
I'm just wondering if there is a need for some contact with the neighbor? If you're going to be doing something that touches property that belongs to the neighbor?
Absolutely. If I need to touch it properly, then I'll permission to do it before I proceed.
I think it's fair to say, or not, this is not a criticism to say, but the height also does change the view from the folks up the street. So that's fair to note, that by going to that second level, you are changing the view shed in the house.
But we wanted to design something that would pick up on the roof lines of the house. So that it's, actually, the house was part of the Astor estate that they, or actually, for the confessional that made it for Astor, lived there in the summer in Ryanke and the winter. So it's kind of cool. But we thought we'd want to put something in that matched and looked like it was actually there from the time the house was built. And that change in the pitch of the roof to make it match the pitches on the house kind of raises it up. And also, I'm a woodworker. I need some room for machines and tools. That's my hobby. And if I put a garage in the bottom, it doesn't leave me much room. But upstairs, I can put in like table saws and router and shapers and...
Could we see the other perspective of the existing wall?
Actually, if you go back, I'd like to point out that looking down the street at it, if you go back a couple slides. If you look to, if you have one without it, that's the heat that you can see right now. That runs along there. A little view, you're really not taking a lot out of the viewer. It's very minor. See here, there's that roof line. Let me put the picture up. You're just slightly over that roof line. It actually blocks out some houses that aren't really up standard. I mean, as far as roof lines are concerned, and just give you a picture of the mountains, so. I think it's, you know.
You just talked about it being a garage, so you're actually going to pull a vehicle in there?
Yeah, one vehicle, one vehicle. If I can, I mean, I don't know, it might be start woodworking, it's like...
But how, why would you approach it? If you were to pull a vehicle in there, how would you drive?
Oh, I have a curb cut on the street here. This curb cut, and then this has all been gravelled before, which this was the approach into the barn.
Can we see the site plan to see?
Well, that was sort of... What I, what we were thinking of, we do two brick runners up and leave the grass, just two brick runners up to the garage.
I don't see garage doors.
It's on there. Yeah. Yeah, and we have a local architect, I mean, not architect, a woodworker, John Dillinger from Stanford, Stanfordville, who's amazing. He will be building that door for us. So it'll be a barn door to match basically the one that's, we have a van to up to the top of Route 9G there, Olana. If you go up there and look at their barns, we're going to, we're going to match one of those.
Do you have the site plan? Can we see the site plan? I'd just like to see what the access would be to this, the bottom, certain.
Right, so what Brian's saying, the curb cut there, at one time, in fact, the photo in the listing for the historic district shows a car sort of parked diagonally this way. And so at one time, obviously, this was a parking area with some gravel on the bank. It's, everything is sloped there, so it's not, it's not ideal. But somebody could get a vehicle up here and in there.
We have pictures.
Of course, you were talking about moving it.
Right, so it improves that you remove the building.
The east access.
If you move it this way, you're going to go closer. If you move it this way, it's more of an angle, but I don't think it would make it possible.
Wait, what was that, on an angle?
Jane, there's an angle coming in off the street to get to where that sliding door is. And that, that would still be the case, even if we move the building three feet this way and a foot or two to the other.
What's the footprint dimensions on that?
Um, you know, that's in the application, and I'd have to revert to that. I think it's thirty-five. Twenty-two and a half in this direction and sixteen and a half in that direction.
Sixteen and a half?
Yeah, so it's going to be a pretty small vehicle.
It's going to be for a very small car.
It's going in that way, yeah.
Is it, yeah, so it's...
Whatever fits.
We do, we do trappings, so it would just be to put in the garage while we're out of town.
Did you see?
When it was built, they had to use...
Oh, I have pictures to show the cars in it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, from the thirties, it was a beautiful, beautiful...
Sixteen feet.
Other questions from members of the planning board?
No.
Questions on this from the public?
Yes. I'm a civic woman. I live on Orchard Drive. I didn't record some of the...
Could it be me wrong?
Not you.
How's that?
A little better.
Everybody else was standing so close. How's that?
Very good.
Thank you for checking.
Okay. I've spoken to the client and Warren, who told me he had many concerns just simply that the footprint, we keep hearing in all these new houses, who builds about the footprint, but the height goes up and up often, and certainly in this case, and it just, because Ryanke is such a small town, hamlet really, it's, has a lot of quite big buildings in it now, and it just seems if, since this is not going to be a home but a workshop, I'm wondering why it has to have that extra height, hiding more sky, mountains, trees, just more rooftops if it's not absolutely necessary. That's my only comment. I live across the street, so I'm very aware of it.
Warren, do you want to just add to that?
Well, I think we started by saying that, you know, it's not going to be an expensive project to rebuild this, and we have retaining walls of all two. But if they're going to make that investment, they'd like to have a little more utility out of the building. And so by raising pitches in the roof, they are not only matching roof pitch in the house, but they're also giving themselves the ability to stand. At least in the middle of that space upstairs, which right now they don't have. It's true, there's no question that the massing of the building is more than the footprint. It includes the overall height configuration of the roof. And so the raised roof plus the gable facing the house, I mean, truthfully, it's probably blocking, you do it with Brian and Susan more than anybody else. But nonetheless, it's just trying to get a little more value out of the buildings for them. But it's not, it's not going to be a residence. It's not going to have any plumbing. There's no intent to put any other, you know, function in there. But, you know, I can understand if I were going to undertake a project like that for myself, I'd probably like to be able to use second floor. But I certainly understand the concern about the height. And anytime you make a change, it's going to be a change. The red house further down on the detested terrace is more similar to the roof pitch here. And in fact, at least from this vantage point, the roof of the proposed barn is pretty much aligned with that gable down there. So it's, anytime, say, anytime there's a change, it's going to look a little different, and it's going to take a while to get used to, but I don't think it's out of scale personally with the hamlet. And I think it's, it is an improvement over the, the set that's in now. But certainly, I can understand those that don't want to see a change.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Any other questions from the planning board?
Jason, same as last Warren. If there's any exterior lighting, provide cuts of that. So you have that in mind?
Yes, absolutely.
Could I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second? All in favor? Very good. The town of Ryanke Planing Board, your actions follows, and that taken by Brian and Susan Rowan. For site plan approval, special use permit approval under Town Code Chapter 125, Section 12572 and 12565 respectively. At Pittsburgh Orchard Drive, Ryanke. As depicted, described in the application package and plan sheets by Warren Temple Smith Architects, LLC dated January twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen. Referred to proposed actions type 200C for which coordinated environmental quality review is included. Based upon review submitted information, we bring the enforcement planning board members, I guess we didn't get much of the C A B, but I think we do. Our members on their site list of the project property finds the proposed purpose consistent with the objectives stated in Chapter 125. With regards to the policy of the Town's Health and V R P, Town Board members, and the student quality, correct me if I'm wrong, find that proposed actions as depicted and or described in the background and submissions are consistent with those policies. With respect to the application for site plan approval, finds the proposed work and intended use to be consistent with Town Code Chapter 125, Section 12572, and approves the application exclusive of the application materials and plan sheets by Warren Temple Smith Architects, dated January twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen, subject to the following. Requests that the applicant provide an example of the code compliant exterior lighting to be installed on the home, part of stamping sign as referenced below, so information is retained through Town, Town's project file. He authorizes the planning board chair to stamp and sign the above cited site plan upon the applicant satisfaction of below conditions and requirements within six county months of the adoption of this resolution. Submission of the above cited site plan in the form and number specified in the Town Code Chapter 12578. Paying any outstanding fees and or universal amounts due to town of Ryanke related to review and processing of the application submitted to this resolution. Receive all approvals, authorizations, or certifications required herein or from any of the town, county, state, or other agencies required to undertake the proposed actions. And also, just to mention, this is an application for site plan approval, not for special use.
I have a question.
The public comes out.
I have a question.
Yes.
So is this, so is the application before us moving the building, the feat that you talked about in the beginning, or as depicted on the original application?
Well, we were originally proposing moving the building. After our discussion with the site and then it was reiterated this evening with Brian, we're prepared to move it off the west property line, or further the south property line, as needed. I think, as we discussed, the excavation is going to reveal a lot. We have to leave everything better than we find it. And if it's going to make it easier to build it and not disturb the retaining wall, not to mention the long-term means of it, and then from the west side, to move a few feet, we're doing that, but we're moving into the applicant's property, so we're not really making conditions any worse, if you will, with respect to existing property.
Looking at this picture, is it even possible to rebuild it where it is?
It really depends on what's there right now for foundation. I'm thinking it's probably precious little. But again, the retaining walls from the garage to our adjacent neighbor, you know, a couple of them stacked together, and it looks like they've been poured aditively to reinforce things. We obviously don't want to increase any pressure. We want to relieve that. So I'm assuming I cannot bear on the existing wall, whatever it is. And if I, if I come in board, I can put in some gravel and a lot of water to disperse, and it's going to relieve pressure against the existing walls. But I really don't know until I dig what I've got. I just, assuming it's going to be inadequate, and I have to be prepared to make something that's, that's structural both for this building but also for the adjacent property.
So I guess the question is, are members of the planning board satisfied with that proposed way of addressing the actual sighting of the rebuilding?
I think something should be somewhere in the motion that indicates it.
To add some leeway for moving it?
Yeah.
Yeah, it is going to be moved, so, I mean, we should, we should prove it where it's going to be, not where it is now.
Well, I think what he's saying is he's not sure.
Well, but it, but it sounds like he's pretty sure he will, not yet build it.
But you don't know how much.
Well, up to three feet, this is actually, because any further, we're hinging on the septic system when it happens.
Right, so maybe.
And this well, this is a dug well that's...
I haven't, I haven't actually seen it. Brian, do you have any information on the old?
It was probably the original well of the structure. Whenever they added it, it was built in eighteen forty-five. So that was probably the original well, and it was just covered over.
Is it dug well?
It's a dug, yeah, it's a stone circular, you know, probably fifteen feet down to the water level, and then it's been there. So we're going to, we deal with that in the most appropriate way possible. And also moving this, it leaves a lot of issues that could go wrong with that existing retaining wall.
Yeah.
I mean, it just makes sense to move this.
So why do we want to quantify how, how far we're moving?
Three feet is what we best, best estimate.
Three feet, you both directed?
No, three feet just to the east.
Okay, and how much to the, to the north?
I wasn't, I wasn't planning on moving anything to the north because once the, that well is filled in and the new retaining wall is done, probably got plenty of room, I think, there to do that. If I need to move it, afford the engineers to do a proper retaining wall, of course, I'm going to be gone for two, four quarters.
We're going to try and add a statement under the resolution. And we'll read after, well, this will be served for four, or have been read for four. Basically, that we're approving the location of the new structure, conditioned on the potential to move that structure, and move it up to three feet northerly and or three feet easterly as required by conditions found during excavation. Does that sound good?
That, that cleans it up.
All right. It's moving at three feet.
I just think of the resolution.
Richard, did you get that?
I don't want people to get caught in the situation where you're doing something the resolution doesn't say. Get touch on table later.
Okay. Okay, very good. So, second?
Second.
Okay, pull the board. I'll put my glasses on so I can see what I'm doing. Edna?
Hi.
Erin?
Hi.
Melody?
Hi.
Rudy?
All right.
Erin? And I'm going to die.
I've known him my whole life.
So you will get the revised resolution. I'm very glad Andy is here tonight, so they will have an accurate record of exactly what I just said, since I don't remember what it was. Okay. We're onto new business.
Good luck, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Okay. That was our last special use, I was, that's what we're hearing. Onto new business. Groenex Dorset, MC, back to the Mel Street. Site plan review, replace windows and deck, and improvements to the roof.
Hi, I'm Michelle Accadino, representing Groenex Door, Susan's City. And we're starting with the main building. Is that correct, Michael?
Yes.
The building is nineteen Greenell Street in Rock Cliff, and it's in, of course, a historic overlay. And per my pre-conference direction, I was told to research each component that we're thinking about changing, just to make sure we know exactly when they were built. And with the help of Star Library, Nancy Hudler, while she was on vacation, and the assessments office, I have this to remind me exactly what was built when. So what we would like to do is, first and foremost, energy efficiency improvements. We'd like to, we're going to re-insulate the entire house and re-insulate roofs and walls, and change every wind, replace every window and door with the top of the line mark and windows that have the best... and change every wind, uh, replace every window and door with, um, the top of the line mark and windows that have the best new value. I believe it's new point two eight anyway, to note. Um, and also with Simpson terminal doors with a very high art bond rate. Um, the windows will match what's there now, they're two over two. And there are a few windows that we'd like to change, and I can outline that for you. Two of the most important windows that we need to change that will look similar, they will be casement windows and not double homes, but they will look like double homes and they are for egress, because neither of the upstairs bedrooms have an egress window. So in order to comply with code, we have to do that. Um, and we would also like to, could we go to A zero zero? Thank you. Um, I can show you a better picture there. We would also like to, oops. Well, maybe we can have, that's okay. That's the other house. That's the accessory. Maybe it's not in there.
I think it alerted phone from the man who said I downloaded that.
You couldn't, that's okay, I, I can explain it and I will bring pictures next time. Um, so we want to replace all the windows and doors and in, on, can I have the elevations maybe for this? And the elevations would be A, it doesn't look like you have all my files.
I do.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. I'm just nervous, so I'm taking that. It would be, um, A three and A four. It's just easier to talk because I have the demo right next to what's proposed and then you'll see exactly what I'm trying to change. So while we're finding that, um, we're also would like to do some roof improvements. Um, replacing, there's a roof in the back that's a hip roof and that's not visible from the street. And that was actually built in nineteen eighty-eight. Um, if you look on the assessors records that I provided for you, that's, they'll, they'll show you that that was, that that hip roof was actually, that second floor bedroom was put on in nineteen eighty-eight. And what we'd like to do, oh, perfect, thank you, we'd like to continue the gable all the way out to the back where you wouldn't see it anyway. And as you could see, uh, some of this back portions, um, many of that, much of that was put on after the fact. So they don't really have historic windows on the nineteen, I mean, excuse me, from eighteen eighty. Um, let's see what else. We want to, can we go to A three? Let me take it here. I guess I can show you here. Right now, the building has, um, a, a canopy that's kind of falling apart. We wanted to just connect it and I can't really discern exactly what was there. If you, if we look at the historic documents, it looks like it had a roof similar to that. But either way, I feel like it, it's really keeping in the harmony of the building. It actually makes it look better. Um, here's one of the egress windows, just so you can know, looks the same, but it's really a casement that looks like an egress window. Um, and in the front of the building in nineteen ninety-one, they added these really big fat columns, massive, they don't look correct. But if you do look at what I got from, um, this file from, from the Star Library, you'll see that the posts were a lot thinner. Uh, so we'd like to change it back to that. And the other thing is, can I, can you please go to A one? Sorry, this is just the tone. The other thing we'd like to do is, this is the deck that's there now with these stairs that do not comply whatsoever. Um, we'd like to reduce the deck down and basically that deck was put on in nineteen ninety-one. And originally, if you look back from nineteen fifty to nineteen seventy-seven in the second, the assessors records, and which I've provided for you, you'll see that the deck was actually, it looks like four feet. So it was very, very narrow and this one was very, very narrow too. Um, one change we would like to make is to remove this deck entirely and thin up these stairs so they align with the stairs below. And that might be, if you can pull up A zero zero, that might be something where you can see. Sorry, the opinion. Yeah, so you can see these big wide stairs, they're not compliant right now, you could really fall down hurt yourself. And this is stone steps that were, I don't know when they were put on, I have no record of those, probably recently, I would imagine. But we'd like to, um, make them line up with the front door. And, um, and you can also see here, I mean, this is the hip roof that was put on in nineteen eighty-eight. I, I put that in the documents, you can see that. And these windows, just same with the windows in the sunroom, this, uh, sunroom wasn't enclosed until eighty-eight as well. So, um, we'd like to make the windows that you see from the street, which I don't have a really good picture of that, but this room is over there. We'd like to make that look like the rest of the house. So we would put three double homes that match the front exactly. Um, let's see, where the changes can I point out to you? Better to get them all out now and I think that's it. Also, we would put a code compliance stair, I said that, um, re-point the chimney, uh, the entire new roofing on the whole building. And basically just, it's costing a fortune to heat it right now, so basically just improve it in that way. Uh, one more change, I, I'm sorry. Uh, this is the front living room right here and it's got the same size windows, but some are six inches higher than the others. So we thought we'd align the wall and they actually still, if you want to look at the elevation, um, and I believe that's A three. It'll just make more sense. Can't tell, he was talking with their hands, he was surprised. But it'll make more sense in the front, uh, it's, sorry, it's A four. Oh, no, it's right there. So you can see they were a little bit older before, they'll, they'll still have the up-down that was historic, but they're going to make more sense in the room. And if I forgot anything, I'll let you point it out, so.
I've got a quick question, I think, on the west elevation, uh, we see the front of that, is that a curved roof there?
Yes, actually, this is what the roof is like now, it's sort of too sloppy.
Right, but the, the new one is curved.
The new one, I wanted, yeah, I wanted to, um.
But you're showing, you're showing the same projected height on the other one, but you dropped the roof line on that one, so they're not aligned anymore.
No, they're not, because this deck is, um, a lot deeper, like you can see here. That deck, the deck right now goes to the front face of the building and I wanted to return it back the way it actually was originally in the drawings that I can see from nineteen fifty.
Now, just talk about the height of the roof from the front, on the west elevation, the height of that, the top of that curved roof looks higher than the top of the curved roof on the south elevation. Yeah, that point is.
Well, right here, you can't see where the point is because it's behind the chimney.
Right.
So.
All right, well.
Oh, I, I can't full vector works.
Yeah?
I'm just, just following the eye. Yes. And I actually provided you with axonometric comparisons of the front and the back that I could certainly, um, bring with me to the public hearing if that helps. And maybe I should bring a bunch of boards, just, but.
Other questions? Okay, well, I have a resolution. I guess the first question I have is, could, when you're combining the public hearing for this application that one earlier submitted, um, the greenhouse?
Yeah.
Is, uh, Sue couldn't be here.
Right.
And so when, will she be here on June third?
June third.
So that would work for all, for both public hearings.
Yes.
Okay.
And thank you for allowing us that and I apologize that I didn't know I had to explain that at six thirty.
That's, that's okay.
Uh-oh, it put me on, it's not ready.
The town of Bryan McLean Board here, access follows on the application by Sue Seagull next door for site plan approval under Town Code Chapter 125, Section 12572 of nineteen Grinnell Street in Ryan Cliff. Within a whole bunch of different design. We accept the application supporting documents as adequate for initiating review by the planning board's advisors and public. We classify the proposed actions type 200 secret for which warranted environmental quality review is included. We will schedule a public hearing, a joint public hearing on this application, as well as the application earlier submitted to the greenhouse in place where it currently is shed. For June third at six forty, and direct the clerk to undertake a otherwise caused notice and are posting thereof accordance with the common set forth of the Town Code Chapter 125, dash seven two. Planning board members Eric and Michael will conduct the field visit to the project site and report their observations at the time of public hearing. In accordance with chapter with Town Code Chapter nine, conservation advisory board will refer the application to the C A B for review and written comment concerning environmental factors. In accordance with Town Code Chapter one eighteen, water front consistency review, refer the application to the water front advisory committee for review and written comment concerning consistency with the L W R P. In accordance with the Duchess County Department of Planning and Development, two thirty-nine zoning planning referral, refer the application to the Duchess County Department of Planning and Development for review. Refer the application to New York State Historic Preservation Office for review and payment as the existing principal structure to quarters being constructed in eighteen sixty is located in Hudson River Historic Landmarks District and is listed as a contributing structure. We authorize without prejudice to any information or comment as may be presented at the public hearing or may arise based on both the above stated field visit and referrals. Preparation of working draft and a future meeting which will present language consideration on June third, two thousand nineteen, as will be later timed. Could I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, very good. So I'll see you on June third at six forty.
Oh, will you see me for the next project? Because I'm presenting two tonight.
Well, you're still here, which is, which one?
The second one, I thought I had to present to you and that's the one that we just came in compliance and we were going to change the windows. I provided the drawings, that's the ones that I mixed up.
Oh, I didn't have that, too.
Well, it's, it's all one.
It's all one?
It's all one property, but it's two projects.
But it's two projects on that car.
Okay, well, why did you explain that?
Well, you have, we have the drawings today, I saw the, that's what it was, I was messing with one of those, two projects. This one's pretty easy, um, if you could give me the A zero zero of that page, or I can just use this. This is in the back of the lot, um, on Tewksbury, that little dinner street back there. And, um, it was built, I believe, in nineteen fifty, according to the partial access, which I know is sometimes not a hundred percent. But all we want to do on this one, may I have A two? Um, all we want to do here is, it has all these tiny little square, completely useless, eight by eight inch, inoperable windows. I mean, I don't, this is not a historic building, so I don't know, you know, that we want to remove all of those. And this is going to be an even office for Sue, so, um, this is the one we took the kitchen out of to make it compliant with the accessory building. So this is where the garden is between the two houses. She'd like to put in a bank of operable windows there. And so that's the change. And remove these two on the stairs, because honestly, they don't make sense, but I have interior shots if you want to see them, for I can bring them up here.
Any questions? I'd like to offer an amendment to the resolution we just passed. Uh, first of all, that the public room, it's six thirty-five, not six forty, because that was the earlier one at the greenhouse. And that the resolution that we just passed will also include the accessory use just mentioned here, the renovation of the accessory structure on the property, you're going to keep bringing up. Could I have a motion to approve?
Moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you.
Ma'am, am I allowed to ask a question?
Uh, okay.
Just additional information that some, that some of you may want historically, and I did as much due diligence, due diligence on this as I possibly could. But does anybody have any, I guess you would have told me if I should be digging more or providing something else.
I think you covered it pretty well.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
What's the deal with those scylinders?
Oh, you know what? If we want to take those out, we don't have to go to the fully planning board, do we?
What we'll do is, Eric and I will be doing the site visit, we can take that into consideration there.
Would you, because there is something wrong with those scylinders, I agree. Oh, this is big film, uh-oh, don't tell Sue I said that.
They just look randomly placed.
They, they absolutely are, and that's where she purchased the buildings. Thank you so much.
Okay, next, Jeff Baker, one ten, one fourteen, Route three oh eight, special site plan approval, special use permit and wetland permit single planning public.
Hello, planning board, it's been a while since I've been here, good to be back, hope you're all doing well. Since I was here the last time, I received the zoning board variance that I, that you requested, that was approved. And that was needed because the proposed home is larger than the cottage that's on the property. And per your regulations, the larger home is supposed to be closer to the road. So that was taken care of by the zoning board. In addition, I've received approval from the Duchess County Health Department for the septic system for the proposed house. You've received that?
Yes, I spoke with them, Mr. Pearson this morning.
Any other additional information you'd like from me?
I think in an earlier one, you had some sort of elevation, something of the proposed house.
Yes, I gave you pictures, I gave you copies of, again, I haven't, you know, drawn up or had an architect draw plans, but we're proposing would be a two-story contemporary home.
Seems like all the pictures.
Sure.
Is that the images?
That is a very rough sketch. I think the pictures would be better than the rough sketches, if you could turn that.
Come on, come on.
Yep.
But that, that's, you know, you can't hold me to that exact drawing, but that's what we're looking at, something in that ballpark.
Questions for Jeff?
Yeah, this is, this, we, we need a variance because of wetland and coating here.
Yeah, what, yes, we're going to be in, I believe it's called the wetland boundary.
Right, upper zone.
Not in the wetland, but in buffer zone.
Well, but why do you need to put it in the buffer zone?
Uh, anywhere a building down there, I would be in the buffer zone.
Is that right?
The spec, the special permit, I think it's where the accessory structure is, not? You're converting the, the other structure, the existing cottage on the property, you're continuing, you're going to continue to use that as an accessory dwelling, aren't you?
Yes.
And that's what you've got the variance for.
That's what we've got variance for, but he's done it for us because you've got, I think, one of the issue is wetland.
Correct, that's what the wetland permit is.
Right.
Right, yes.
So, I need to say that.
Anywhere that I filmed down there, I would be in the wetland buffer zone.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Where does the water start in relation to the proposed homes?
Right, that, that dollar line, yeah, dollar line. But you're, you're right on, on.
Well, no matter where I go down there, I can hear the water.
That was one of my comments, the house is, um, you know, pretty close to the lake, I don't know that it's necessarily a unique situation, it looks like there were, you know, there are other structures.
Fairly, I think.
Yeah, there are some other structures that are close.
To cloud the lake.
You know, my, one of the other comments I had related to that is the garage, depending on the pitch of the roof, might be, the runoff might come over and given the proximity to the wetlands and the rain, it might go directly into, you know, these wetlands. And sometimes, you know, that roof water can be pretty hot, so I don't know if that was a consideration we wanted to make or discuss, you know, where that water would be pitching or cutters or how that water would be handled, at least from the runoff. Those might too, might too big issues with that.
Where, where is the, the, uh, wetland, uh, the offset? Is that on that map?
So are you asking Eric?
I'm asking where, where that wetland boundary is. It's not shown on there.
Yes, I believe this is the wetland boundary.
No, that's.
That's, that can be the wetland.
Oh, no, no, here's the flag, it's right here. Can you see this large dotted line? That's the wetland.
Well, how, no, that doesn't make sense.
Well, that's, that's the flag, it's flag, that's the wetland.
Well, but the.
This is the lake here.
Yeah, the buffers, the buffer should be shown on that drawing.
A hundred feet away from that.
It is, it's inland.
I think I can speak to that one a little bit, I've had a number of discussions with Mr. Pearson. The property, basically, the separation from the compartments or the sewage disposal system are supposed to be a certain number of feet away from the edge of the buffer itself, but the specific property doesn't permit that, so therefore it doesn't meet that requirement. The planning, the health department has required a number of different requirements for the sewage disposal system, it's going to be a forced main up to the beach field area, it has to be, I believe, double walled, the joints have to be secured, it has to be pressure tested, the tank has to be pressure tested for a control of any sort of use. The health department recognizes the somewhat unique nature of this, but they have decided to approve this particular plan, even though it doesn't meet the ordinary separation.
Michael, you're speaking about the septic system.
Yes.
Right, I think what Eric and I are puzzling over is the location of a house, not only within the wetland buffer, but right on top of the wetland. I mean, it would not be close to the wetland.
Well, I think there's a question here, because I believe the other core considers to ask a lake to be a wetland, and I don't know, I think we would have to look and see exactly where, along the front of the house, you're saying that they, you're having the wetland delineated just right along the edge of the water?
That's what it says.
Well, you can see the flags, you blow it up, see those flags? That's the flag wetland.
Yeah.
And who did the, who did the delineation?
Ah, someone, his name was Quencer, I believe.
Okay, Norbert Quencer?
Yes, Norbert.
Because the way our lives are written, you can't build in the wetland, you can't, by, especially if you're going to build in the buffer.
We're not in the wetland.
Yes.
The structure isn't touching the wetland.
Are there any... I mean, you know, I haven't read the wetland law from yesterday, but what does the wetland law attempt to achieve? What is the purpose? I mean, does the wetland law condone the construction of houses inches from a wetland?
It's never faced that before, so I don't, I don't think that was the intent, no, I don't think that was the intent. Well, we were told that as long as we're not on the wetland, that we're in the buffer, that's why I'm here, to permit to be able to build within the buffer zone.
We're used to dealing with, like, you know, 20 feet of encroachment, five feet of encroachment on a wetland, this is on the buffer, this, the entire house is in the buffer, it's new construction, it's not like, you know...
It's not previous construction.
Right, so it's, there's no history there.
Well, all I can tell you is, I've met with the chairman, your predecessor, who, what's his name, Art Brown, several years ago, and before this process started, I met with them, and I spoke with them, and I said, before I spend tens of thousands of dollars on this project and pay an engineer to design a septic system, their only concern was, if you can get a septic system approved for the home, you can build a house down there. That's what I was told. Again, I met with Melody at the beginning of this year, and asked her, you know, has anything changed with Sopaska Lake before I spend more money on this project? And again, nothing has changed. So, you know, I met what I was told I had to do, stay outside of the wetland, get a septic system designed for the house, which I've done, so, I mean, that's what I was told I had to do, and I wouldn't be here tonight.
Tristan Clark, you met with us in pre-application meetings, I have not met with you privately.
I met with you earlier.
With other people, but not privately.
No, I did stop by, and I talked to you earlier.
No, not, not me, you may have talked to Michelle, or you may have talked to others, but you've not met with me privately.
I'm going to have to say that in our earlier discussions in pre-application meetings, the house itself, I don't recall it being so right up against the lake itself, such that, basically, you walk out the door and you're in the wetland, so I think to some extent, we were not...
No, it's not walk out the door, there's the wetland, it's probably, I don't know, 100 feet back.
100 feet? Five feet?
No, it isn't, here's the house.
It's about 20 feet.
Here's the wetland.
So it's about 20 feet on that side.
From the corner to the closest point in the lake.
From the corner.
From the garage to here?
That's the water, 20 years.
It's about 5 feet.
Up to the buffer, yes.
Yeah, yeah, 5, like, you know, just right on it.
I think at this point, since we do have the delineation now, which I don't recall did not have before.
No, we've had that.
That is a pre-application meeting.
I've had this wetland for you since December.
No, that's our pre-application meetings that we had, we had earlier.
I had this on the site plan in December, I can show it to you.
Well, I think you'll have to, because I don't recall seeing that wetland delineation of the structure that falls.
Okay, just a minute, please somebody please explain to me what we're trying to accomplish with the proposed application? Is there architectural design? Is there engineering?
Well, that's not, that's not...
It's too soon.
It's the location of...
It's too soon.
Of the proposed dwellings to the, to the wetland. Page 12, 3, here's the wetland delineation, here's the home, last time I was here in December, I had this information.
Well, I commented on the last time that it's here, it was, it's like, on the lake.
I think what we can do is, we can certainly accept the application for review, but I think it's something we need to do.
But you have this, December, I was here in December for this, you have this information.
We're also waiting for, considering the health department to come in and see if that exists.
We have to do, we have to accept it anyway.
But you didn't accept the application, you didn't have anything from the health department until this was...
So we'd accept it anyway.
Right, for review.
Also, I don't think there's previously been any full discussion about this application, am I correct?
Well, there, no, there hasn't been.
Right.
Well, we had a pretty good discussion in December, and then you came up with that the little house was closer to the road than the big house, so let's stop that, and I had to get that zoning variance.
That's right.
And then we have the septic lands.
So, true, I think we're in a position where we would accept the application for review and consideration, and have the site visit, have the C A B do a site visit.
I mean, when you come down to the property, it's quite a high plateau, it's, when you think of, you know, the house being down by the lake, it's significantly higher than the lake. The whole peninsula is, you know, probably 6, 8 feet higher than the lake.
Well, the septic is definitely up, there's no question, so we could definitely do the septic visit. Other questions this evening?
Did you have any plans to deal with the runoff of the roof in terms of gutters and where?
Well, whatever you need, you know, whatever you feel is necessary, gutters, you know, whatever pitch you want on it, that's fine, I have no problem with that whatsoever.
I hear nothing more, I'll leave the resolution. Planning Board here, this is filed in the application by Jeff Baker for site plan approval, discussion use permit and a wetland permit in Town Code, Chapter 125, Section 125, 72 and 67, and Chapter 120, Section 124, at 1010, 1014, Route 308, in the YRC 5 rural countryside zone district. Accept the application and supporting documents is adequate for issuing a review on the planning board, its advisors and the public. We're classifying the both actions as type 2 action under C, which coordinating environment department reviews provided. Your scheduled public hearing on the application for June 3 at 6:45?
6:40.
6:40. And direct proof to undertake or otherwise cause the noticing and posthumary thereof. For delegating planning board members who would like to go.
Michael, I would love to go, but may I suggest that three people go to this one?
Sure.
Because I cannot be at the June 3 meeting, but I will write.
Oh, I would not be at the June 3 meeting, too, so I better not go if two people are not going to be there.
In this one, I want to be...
I don't have a call.
I want to...
So you have a call?
We're just barely in court.
Barely, yes.
Okay, come on. Is that a good thing or bad thing?
It means we won't have a meeting for...
Actually, I might be back in some time.
So I'll, I'll, who wants to go with you?
And I do want to go.
I want to go, too, I've been here before.
I'd like to go with you and Sharon.
Okay. Okay, Sharon, Edna, and me. Okay, we'll conduct a field visit to the project site before the rest of the public hearing. In accordance with Town Code, Chapter 9, Conservation Advisory Board, we refer the application to the Conservation Advisory Board for review and written comment concerning environmental factors. In accordance with Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development, 239, we refer the application to the Dutchess County Department for Plant, Department of Planning and Development for review, and authorizes without prejudice to any information or comment that may be presented at the public hearing or may arise based on both the above study field visit and referrals. Preparation with working draft and review of the resolution for the planning board's expiration on June 3, 2019. Could I have your motion to approve?
No.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. We'll be getting in touch with you about doing the site visit prior to that meeting, and please, if anyone else isn't going to make it on the 3rd, let us know as soon as possible, because you won't have a call.
Michael, I'll double check my calendar for everyone.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll be sure.
Kind of scared.
Thank you, Michael.
Yeah. All right. Next presentation, Jerry Yu Sutin, is that close?
Yes, pretty good.
Site plan discussion use permit, any historic law.
Why don't you like go first? Let's, do you, hey, you want to do the site plan? He's on laser plan, I'm already going to use that slide there.
Okay, good evening, I'm Paul Tier, I'm the engineer for Mr. Yu Sutin. Mr. Yu Sutin bought the property at 476 to Dash 482, Route 308. It is a historic property in the town of Reinbeck. There are several existing buildings on this property. This is Route 308, coming here, it's hard to see the project location map here, but we're not far from 9G's 308 intersection. Literally, less than a half mile down the road there, on the right, is the, from off the ramp from 9G, Route 308, and the property is right there, and here. Existing on the property currently, we have the main house is towards the back of the property, that's the main residence. As we come in the driveway at the front of the property, we have the main barn here, whole large barn. There is another existing barn, again, these structures were built in the 1800s, and then connected to the existing barn here is a cottage, was living quarters. Our application here is to, Mr. Yu Sutin would like to renovate the main barn on the property to be the main residence for him and his family on the property, and we would like to make the living, the house in the back, an accessory structure to the main living house. Currently, today, Mr. Yu Sutin and his family live in the main house here. He has performed some necessary structural renovations of this barn and this barn as, being 150 years old, there's a lot of dry rot and a lot of natural timbers used for posts, beams, rafters, ridges, so we have performed some reparations to support the structure, and Mr. Yu Sutin has worked with the town building inspector as he's moved ahead with these. The other, this here, the dash line here, just is where the existing septic system is for the cottage that is off the house here. Mr. Yu Sutin has just figured out where his septic system is here, as it, it's only this evening, it runs through a 140-foot cast iron pipe, in which direction did he define?
Going, going west, on the other side of the driveway, right there.
Okay, so that's where the other septic system. Both the cottage, the barn structures, and this house, there's an existing well that's up by the old system, that's a little bit up on the hill here, that well feeds both structures that have plumbing in them at this time, and there's no change there. And the other addition that Mr. Yu Sutin would like add is a detached garage to the renovated barn. Can we go to the other site plan, please?
If you mean attached garage?
Uh, detached, yes, sorry, thank you. This just brings in a little more detail, the one thing I forgot, and we don't have to go back to it, but over here on the other side of this road is a section of the property that is the, this is an environmental conservation land here, and there is no development planned on that portion of the property. Thanks, Ken.
How big is the property, please, Mr.?
The entire property is just over 12 acres here, 12.3, I believe this is about four acres or...
Yeah, 4.1.
4.1 acres on this side here. The other axis that, he has this property, and this is Miller, Miller Hill Road?
Miller Road.
Miller Road, that comes out back here, and can get out to Route 308 here. Is this old driveway here, that's been here since the barn, has probably been here, with today's speed in the road, and require safe site distances is a little, if you want to make a left out of here, you better have your ears and eyes open. But there is, and I believe Mr. Yu Sutin and his family take the safe way out, out the back, and there's no proposed changes to any of the interior roadways, there are gravel roadways now that are planned to be just maintained in their current condition. This is, there are also here on site is a existing in-ground swimming pool, that is existing. I don't know at what time, years passed, that this house was used as a cottage. Mr. Yu Sutin's plan was to have that, you know, it is attached, there are currently first and second floor connections to the barn, to use that as kind of a recreation house, have like a home gym and sauna in the basement, and use it as just a home office and den in the upstairs there. Any site visits, I'm sure Mr. Yu Sutin would be happy to walk you through this area to see, as the interior of this house has been gutted down to the frame in preparation for his plant work here. This here in front of the barn is just, this will be the main front door or entrance into the house besides the detached garage, and it's kind of at grade, so we just are planning to put like a pavered tight patio out front there, that is currently just grass. Any area on this property that is... This is just a picture of that cat cottage that's attached to the barn, the game room and the rec room there with a gym, sauna here on the side.
This is proposed?
This is proposed. Yeah, it used to have a couple bedrooms in it. It used to be a three-bedroom house. And we're working with the health department at the same time and Mr. Pearson, of course. And our new house here is going to be three bedrooms also, so we're working with the county for approval on just running the plumbing from here into the existing septic system. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, is this is the barn to be renovated or this is the house?
This is the cottage on the, on the left side.
Thank you.
No, no problem. Next one. That's just the picture of the second floor. Again, due to the ceiling, there's only the center that is usable. Move on. First floor to barn and the cottage is right here, sits straight off this corner here. Uh, this is just really an open kitchen, living room space here. Here's the entry as you would come in off the newly constructed garage, a library, a bathroom, nothing special. Next, next picture. Second floor to barn, shows the three bedrooms up on top, kind of like a master bedroom off to the right here with a master bathroom and two children's bedrooms over on the left side. Stairway coming up there, these stairs are existing in the structure today. We can move on. This just shows the three-car garage, 27 feet deep. I think it's about 36 feet wide, 37. And we go next to get some of the architectural views. The upstairs of the garage is just, that would probably be the one at last one. This really shows the layout with the three structures to help you, Kathy, hopefully a little bit. We should have started with this one in order, but I apologize. And the only existing, I said this is all existing and request is through permit is that the garage room. Now we can go look at some of the building elevations. The, this is, as you come up the driveway, this is the new garage on the right side of your barn. Notice some of the features, there are three cupolas on the top of the existing barn. We plan to keep those as they were in our pre-application meetings with Melody and Michael, considered to be a historical element that will feature, and we'll keep. The bottom is total opposite side, the front door to the cottage actually faces the pool and septic area. So that would be the barn structure on the other cable side. This is the real view, this is the roadside view, Route 308 from the back. One of the requests was try to keep on the roadside or visible side was the six over six window style for anybody can see it from the roadway. In the interior, which isn't visible here, kind of courtyard area, we do not show. If it is a comment that we could discuss with you guys, but at this point, you know, we, we put them on any windows that are visible from any cars driving down the road.
Are those existing roof lines?
Are these existing roof lines? Yes. We, there, one of the parts of the structure that is actually, remains in excellent condition is the rafter system. In this, the other barn, not so much, but this barn, the rafter system and the ridge was in excellent condition. The barn on the other side of the driveway there, it's kind of pulling apart and causing Jerry some, some concerns and figuring, we're going to figure out how to brace it to try to keep it together. Part of our proposal is, Mr. Yu-Sutin would like to put solar panels on this side of the house to help provide energy to the house, you know, a green type of proposal. These double door systems, which is like a set of glass French doors and then set of glass windows, these are the current garage door openings from the front. Unfortunately, we didn't provide a planning board with existing photos of the structure, which we did, we did, but unfortunately didn't. But they, there are existing, we are keeping these units in the existing barn door openings that are there now. So we are actually, the posts, the way that are supporting post and beam construction are here in the middle, then on the side. So we're keeping the openings where they are.
Can you update the end of the structure of the barn and then re-govering what needs to be re-govered?
That is correct. You know, finishing is the interior with the post and beam construction. Some of the posts here, the previous owner has previously replaced a bunch of 12-by-12 pressure-treated posts and cut out the old ones. And you can see they're on a little concrete foundation that the owner before this had. I don't know what's next here, if there is a next slide or more. And this is just a finished overview of what this site would look like. These are the current colors of the cottage, kind of a tan with a granite roof. The existing barn today is a greenish-blue that is half peeled off and failed. And Mr. Yu-Sutin has researched and we do not believe that is the historic record, we do not believe that's the initial color or the original color of the building. Here, we are proposing a barn red siding somewhere up here. And as we move forward, we can provide samples and color charts for both the siding, red barn siding. This looks a little greenish here, but it's really a gray roof, metal roof. The existing roof is metal and we're just replacing it with a new gray metal roof. And that really summarizes, we do have this special use permit here for the...
Accessory structure.
For the accessory structure. And we have one to go in front of the zoning board and that one's for, I think we're on next week.
For the accessory structure.
Oh, that's for the size of the accessory structure being over 1,000 square feet. Thank you, Jerry. We have a special use permit for the change of the accessory structure here in front of the board and to renovate the barn. The ZDA is, the existing house is not much over 1,000 square feet, but it, what it is, footprint is about 1,200 square feet. So we do have a application in front of the zoning board for the size of that accessory structure. At this point, if you have any questions, comments?
I have a few questions and just a couple comments. I'd much prefer the way that you dealt with the street side of the barn.
We did eliminate a considerable, Jerry's first ideas was that he wanted a lot of natural light up there and hearing your comments, we did remove a large quantity of windows, especially on the visible sides.
I think it makes a vast improvement.
Yep.
There are a couple things that we need to have on your site plan, it's an official review document, and once it's in the records, that's the record. A couple of things, first of all, on the site plan you showed us, there's no attribution to who did it and what it is done. There's a box there for the date and the name, but there's nothing there.
Okay. We did, we did have Mike Perella, local landscape surveyor from Red Hook, licensed landscape reviewer, so I can definitely add that.
And a couple of things, in our zoning law in Section 125-75, you see there's a whole laundry list of things that are required for the site plan for it to be approved by the planning board for details. Topography is included, things of that sort need to be there. And my discussion with Dave today, Dave Pearson today, he was discussing getting the septic system from the barn, the new bedrooms, to the existing septic tank. And that needs to be shown on that plan as well. Anything in there needs to be shown, so if someone comes in at a later date and has to do something, they need to know where the different facilities are so they don't end up giving up something they shouldn't be giving up or damaging or something. And on the site plan, it also says we assume each building, you know, we really got a pretty good idea where the leak drill is because at some point they may need to have a reserve field, put a new field. They'll have to know exactly where the existing one is that's being replaced, I think that's something to consider. They've also told me that there are any bends in the line going, the septic line going from the barn, renovated barn to the septic tank. They have to have cleanouts at those points, the residential, if it's commercial, they have to actually have manholes and things of that sort, but they have to have cleanouts. And these are the sort of things that we really need to have on the plan because who knows what's going to happen in 10, 20 years. We need the details of what goes on on the property for the record and just if anyone ever challenges anything, that was done, we need to be able to demonstrate what exactly was placed on the property. So you might want to just review Section 125-75 of our zoning law to see what different elements are there that we contain for residential developments such as this for our single-family home as opposed to, let's say, some commercial development, something like that. But we do need that information for us to maintain and to make sure that we're legally doing what we're supposed to do to keep a proper record.
Okay. I think we're just falling off on the septic design, we can move forward with that and get some approval of a, of a design and a letter from Dave Pearson on that. We can move forward with that.
And that needs to be shown on the final site plan?
Absolutely.
It needs to be stamped and signed.
Yes. And as far as the, the topography on this, I don't know if we can, it's official way to request a waiver, it is over 12 acres here. There is no excavation planned on this site. You know, Mr. Yu-Sutin, as to get this property resurveyed for the site plan, I know he spent $4,000 with Mr. Perella getting it bound, resurveying everything picked up on here that we had. And I know a topographic of 12 acres or a large area like this would be a significant cost. And not changing any, we're not excavating, we're not moving any material. I think, just request a waiver on, on that one item here from the board.
You can get topo off the parcel access.
And then put it right on.
If we could, I can, if that's acceptable, we can certainly drop that in.
I think what we need, that would be adequate.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. What's the status of the Ukrainian rule against rural property? Does the property owner own it? Does it have clear title to it or is this still discovered here?
That falls within Mr. Yu-Sutin's property and he has full title to it?
He has full title to it because that was owned by the town at one time. I'm happy there was always a discussion about whether that was clearly...
That's the standard.
The town, the town definitely, that's all. I just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
Just a few little detail to clean up.
I think you mean to say attached or not attached. A lot of the plans it says detached.
Yeah, we were, we struck out, oh, it's filled for three of them.
One of those words.
Mike, who do you want to introduce that round?
At the public hearing. At the public hearing, yes. Because maybe other people would like to hear it as well.
Pictures are online, so it would be nice to have them included in the presentation.
Okay, yeah.
We do have the full national register nomination to the files.
The, the ground floor of the, of the barn, of the big barn, does that add a floor in now?
It currently just has a dirt or gravel type floor. And we're going to, inside the post puddings, pour a frost pudding and put a concrete slab on it. Because we're worried, we're worried we don't want any frost removal on it, so we'll put a frost, protected frost pudding in there and concrete slab.
And then all of them will go from there?
Yes. That ought to be well planned out by Mr. Yu-Sutin in the builder. And, and, you know, especially to meet the required elevations of whatever septic system. Hopefully we avoid having some sort of chamber with a pump in it to get it over there, but we haven't gone that far.
The elevation?
It's pretty flat through there.
Okay, so not a huge amount of pumping.
Right. Yeah, it's, it's, it's pretty flat in the area of the house and the cottage in the barn there.
Was it going to be a pump or something?
Yes.
Could we go back to the previous slide showing the compound? What was the, this, these buildings, this compound has existed in that configuration for a very long time, is that correct?
This is the proposed attached garage. These two have been here, this is dates back to the, what, 1800s?
1830s is what I was...
1830s, and I believe this is in the 19...
No, 1850.
1850s, so these two buildings have been there a very long time.
And the sort of beige building is actually connected to the large building?
Yes.
And what was the historic use of the entire?
I'm guessing it was, I don't know exactly what the cottage is, maybe for farmhands or something, but it was a, a living structure. I think if you go back to the earlier 1800s, I believe, you know, this was connected to the larger property that split off behind it with the larger mansion.
Or Carter's Skylar estate. So, so the sort of beige part of this was always, has always been used for occupied human housing?
Yeah, it has, it has hardwood floors in it. You know, it, it certainly was used as a, you know, residential building.
It had three bedrooms and two bathrooms, full septic system and six rooms.
The color of it, is that considered in some sense historic? Is there some reason that it's a different color than the rest of it?
Is it, what's the type of siding on its structure? Is that...
It's all cladded.
It's all cladded?
Yeah. And from what I can gather, the cottage was painted about 30-some years ago at the same time as the main residence because they're both the same color.
Oh, I see.
You know, so that's just something that's been there for 30-some years.
So Melody or Nancy, do you want, this is a Skylar barn?
Yes.
Correct? And, and it's on the national register or it's...
The whole property.
The whole property is on.
Even though originally there was one parcel owned by the Skylar, later the Star, the Miller, right? Nancy later, Walter Stur, Mrs. Walter Stur, Miller. Right. So at one time it was one parcel. It's been broken up, Skylar house, Miller house still exists, all of that.
But this barn per se was part of the original Skylar estate.
Yes. And apparently connected, some sources say underground to the property across, on the right side of the road. And the carriage barn, there's a large carriage barn that's also originally part of the parcel that we're looking at.
Thank you.
So there was a dairy barn between this and the water source, but that has been taken down. But I think that there was mainly the dairy and lived in this, it was, I think here on property manager and general work.
Do you want to identify a few details of information we're still going to require at the weekend?
Okay. Sure. So I'll go through a few of these kind of quickly, a few others. I didn't see a copy of the EAF or an active statement. We haven't done those.
The EAF was part of the Seminoles.
But if we didn't, you know, I was trying to figure out if we're actually in agricultural, special agriculture area. I didn't, when I looked at the zoning map, I didn't see that. So I didn't go forward with that active alter data statement, but we can certainly complete it if you want.
It's within 500 feet of the parcel. You're, you're really close. I took a look at it. There are only a couple around, you're really close to one. Just make sure you're not within that 500 feet, I think you might just be outside.
I looked at it and I thought you were a little bit outside of it, so...
I didn't see a copy of the EAF or an active data statement. We haven't done those when we...
The EAF was part of the Seminoles. But if we didn't, you know, I was trying to figure out if we're actually in agricultural, special agricultural area. I didn't, when I looked at the zoning map, I didn't see that, so I didn't go forward with that active data statement, but we can certainly complete it if you want.
It's within 500 feet of the parcel. You're really close. I took a look at it, there were only a couple around, you're really close to one. Just make sure you're not within that 500 feet, I think you might just be outside.
I looked at it and I thought you were a little bit outside of it, so...
Just make sure they're within 500 feet, then it should be okay.
Okay.
I think it's close. The big one I think I found, you're going to put zoning board to get a variance for that existing structure, the size for 1,000 square feet. I took a look at the plans and it appears that in aggregate, all of your accessory structure is going to be over 1,500 square feet, which that means you need an area variance for that as well.
Then that's through the ZVA?
That would be through the ZVA, so you...
What are the accessory structures now?
On the plan, I'll get to that as well. So on your plans, you're going to have an existing accessory residential structure, then you have the barn over here, and then you also have, and this is, I believe, considered accessory structure, it's a covered, what is this, a hot tub over here, I believe?
Yes.
So all of your structures would be part of that. And then, in addition to that, you're proposing, oops, you're proposing a gazebo. That would actually become a fourth accessory structure on the site, and you're only allowed three by code. So to do the fourth, you'd also have to go...
That could be special for...
Oh, for the fourth one?
Yeah.
Okay, great, yeah. But I do believe, you'll have to look into it, I do believe you may need to get that area variance for more than 1,500 square feet in aggregate for all the accessory structures.
Okay.
Yeah, and we talked about, you know, the site plan items, we'd like to see on there, so that is good. Looks like a lot of labels for the patio, it's actually for the barn, that's a minor thing. Talked with all our applicants about lighting, we'll take your proposed floodlighting on the plans. Just make sure that the lighting you're proposing is consistent with the Town Code 12556C. Essentially requires cutoff lighting and downlighting for dark sky compliance and type of thing.
Okay.
So just make sure the lighting is consistent, we'd like to see just a cut of floodlighting as...
Kind of works on us.
Yeah. Just whatever that might be.
We can get some more details on our proposed lighting for the barn and any other lighting we propose to add. I believe it's just on the barn and the garage there.
Except to make sure it's compliant with the code and the mail set, so those cuts should help us understand what you're proposing, but we can do that. Then, the, you talked about, I think in our pre-application, maybe you're going to transfer bedrooms from the cottage to the renovated barn, so you're putting three bedrooms in the barn. You are proposing an office in the cottage on the second floor. So, and that office is proposed to have a bathroom, from what I saw on the plans. So it appears...
Powder room.
A powder room?
Not a full bath.
Not a full bath?
Yeah.
Okay. So as I said, that would actually make it technically then essentially equivalent to four bedrooms and four baths, and that would be different from what's on the site now, which may have implication for your discussion.
There's an existing powder room there.
We'll label it more as a half pass of powder room.
Yeah, clarify, it's an issue with the county, you know, making sure you have the proper stuff, permits and all that kind of stuff. Then my two last major questions right now, you showed a lot of solar on the roof, I'm assuming that was just to show that you want to put solar up, not necessarily exactly what you're going to use. We're doing a lot of discussions of solar in town, and you are permitted to do what you can use for your own use on the site through a building permit, but anything more...
Well, we've been discussing this with Tesla and CentCom, and I'm getting older and maybe we're thinking of getting an electric car or a garage in Tesla.
Yeah, the solar supply, just wanted to let you know, in terms of putting it on there, you can add what you want for your use on site through a building permit, but anything else would be considered generation for offsite, and that requires a whole different...
Yeah, this is still to have to use grid, there wouldn't be enough solar.
Yeah, we did put that as a depiction, we don't have an exact design from a solar company.
Mike, I mean, I'm thrilled that you put it on there to say you want to do it, and you might want to take those off, and you just put a label on there saying solar proposed on this side of the roof or something, just because if we go back in the future, we may say it's different than what's on there, so, just for consideration. And then I guess my only other question, we've been talking a lot about colors before we got, you know, to the next meeting, was why the existing cottage is proposed to be a different color than the barn and garage? Just because we've talked colors in the past and just thought about it.
I'll let Jerry discuss that.
I'd be willing to have it all the same color.
I just, you know, color's been, you know, a discussion. I'm just curious if there was a rationale behind it, if I had the story.
I went to visit this historian at the library, and she basically said that, you know, there was no proof of any colors that were used, but red would be, a barn, the red would be kind of traditional, acceptable stories there with concern.
It may be, if these two attached structures were historically in two different colors, then I would think you would want to continue that so that one reads as residential historically and the other as a barn. That may be what was behind it.
That was kind of what I was getting at, is there a story, you know, rationale behind?
I think Jerry just wants to, you know, do what's in the best interest of, what's desired by the local, you know, people here.
You don't have a code that says it's got the X color, Y color, so if you want...
Our initial meeting with Jim, Mike, and Melody, they discussed trying to find out historic colors there and trying to maintain some...
But there's no requirement.
Okay.
Just curious why.
Okay.
Also, in terms of the solar, is it true that you won't see that from anywhere off the top?
That is true. That's why, it shows a lot, so maybe, you know, this label actually shows, so maybe just the label saying it's going to be there on that side of the roof is good, because it may or may not end up looking like that exactly, and this kind of shows, it matters. It's just a thought.
Okay, we can approach it that way, no problem.
If that's, I mean, obviously that's, you know, if that's acceptable, or else the planning board's just might, my recommendations, I think, planner. The only other thing I'd like to say I don't believe I saw, but maybe it was in the packet, was any details on the conservation usement, just what the details of that are. Sometimes those usements have requirements that, you know, maybe notify if something's happening.
So you want a copy of the deed so you see what the...
Whatever these restrictions are.
Okay, I know Jerry has that information, we can provide a copy of it.
Who is that, who? It's Hudson inherited, I spoke to the director there a couple of times.
Mark, Mark Applesman?
Yes.
It's good for us to have that for the files, so just make sure there isn't anything...
Okay, we can send a PDF of that into the device.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, well I have a resolution. The town of Rydick, 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 the town[1166.12]
Just as a matter of official question, what is the origin of your family name? What country?
Creighton. And if you know your roots, it's quite old.
We don't have a long situation.
Wait till you win this time.
Oh, there you have another, another one.
More?
I'll come right over. Michael West, 595 308 Minor Subdivision Lot Line Adjustment.
Exactly. It's very uncomplicated kind of thing, so this probably will take very long, but...
I hope it does.
A hundred years ago, Harder Lane was the main road, and then the state cut through a big block of rock and flattened out the road and created Route 308, which left this strange little teardrop-shaped piece of land, which now I own. And then in the 50s, somebody came through, developed some parcels, built a series of houses along here, including mine, which is just kind of wedged up into the very end of this teardrop. So now I'd like to do some renovation of my house. I currently have two accessory structures. I have an attached two-car garage, and then I have a small shed, not nearly enough space. So I'd like to build an accessory structure up behind my house, but I don't own that land, so I'm in the process of buying that from my neighbor. Palma Driscoll owns this big farm that some of you may know as the Old Gallup Farm. And the property line actually juts in like this between my two neighbors and comes within 15 or 20 feet of the back corner of my house. So it's just like right there, this wooded half-acre parcel. So Palma has been kind enough to say that she will sell that .55 acre parcel to me, and then I can build a garage workshop right up here behind my house. And, oh, yeah, the house is down here. You can see how it's kind of wedged in. Then I can just continue my driveway right up into the back, and my garage will be up there. So it's a simple lot line adjustment for now, just from these two points to these two points, and then transfer that .55 acre from Palma to me.
Now, just, so you and your neighbor are both co-applyants on this application to subject by the minimum amount of time?
Correct.
Okay, and you're representing her as well as yourself?
I am. I just turned in the document that gives me authorization to speak for her.
Excellent, okay, so we're good to go with that. Questions from members of the planning board? Hearing none?
I have a resolution.
I'm not the planning board, thanks. As you heard tonight, there's been a lot of discussion about accessory structures and sizes, the number that you can have on the site. It doesn't have anything to do with this application, but with the purpose of the reason you're doing this, just make sure you're aware of what those regulations are, so that if you're going to go over the 1,500 aggregate between all the accessory structures or more than a certain percentage of the size of the house, you may have to go over to the board to get that area variance.
I was hired a couple of years ago, but I was on the ZBA for 25 years, so I'm kind of familiar with that process. So I may be requesting more square footage than is allowed. But originally, when I bought this property, it was an R3A, and I had 3.5 or something. Now it's been changed to an R5A, so with the addition of the .55, it brings me closer into compliance with the law, but not quite five acres. So I may have to go for the variance just to have an accessory structure, not a four acre parcel.
Yeah, as long as you're aware, just want to make sure you go through this process and then realize there may be another one you have to...
Right, right. And I also may need to do a home occupation business thing, because I've been renting a woodworking shop in Kingston for the last 10 years, and I would love, I've really downsized a lot, so I would love to have it up in that same building behind my house instead of driving to Kingston every night. So it'll be a combination garage and woodworking shop.
So when you go here, you build a plan for both uses. Do you have to come back for amended site plan in the experience of the wood shop?
Right. I, I'm pretty sure I'll have to request a variance for additional square footage, but it's up behind my house in a way that it can't be seen from the road, very friendly with both of my neighbors. I don't think they're going to complain that I have a building up in there in the woods. So hopefully, you know, I can figure out what the proper percentage is and make a request for a little extra space.
Where exactly on 308 is it?
It's before you get to Pell's Road. Pell's Road is right down here at the end of my property. And Bowlin Becker is across on the other side, so you pass Bowlin Becker, and then I'm on the left.
Any other questions? I have a resolution. Town Project Planning Board, your address follows in the application by Mr. Williams. Oh, I said, right, okay. By Michael West, the Minor Subdivision under Town Code Chapter 101, Section 101-4.4 at 595 308 in the RC5 World Countryside Zoning District. Accepts the application and supporting documents as adequate for initiating review by the planning board with advisors in public. Classifieds the proposed action as type 2 under secret for which coordinated environmental quality review is precluded. We're scheduling the public hearing for June 3 at 6:45.
Yes.
Okay. And direct the clerk to undertake or otherwise cause noticing and posting thereof. Delegating planning board members to someone other than me?
Uncle, I'll go and submit my comments and ratings since I won't be here until...
Thank you. To conduct the field visit and report their observations at the time of public hearing. In accordance with Town Code Chapter 9 Conservation Advisory Board, refer the application to the Conservation Advisory Board for review and comment concerning environmental factors. In accordance with Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development 239 Planning and Zoning Referral, refers the application to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development for review. Authorizes without prejudice to any information or comment that may be presented at the public hearing or may arise based on both the above cited field visit and referrals preparation of a working draft or approvals resolution for the planning board's consideration on June 3, 2019, or as may later be timed. Very motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Okay.
Terrific. Well, thank you very much. See you on the 3rd.
Yes, you will.
Night.
Okay, and we have one more?
Two more.
Two more.
Definitely two.
More. And we have, oh yeah, and we have the one referral from the...
I'd like to thank you all for our 14-hour day today. I'm here for Cheryl Gourissee. I'm Mary from Bayhorse. As you can see from the site plan, there's absolutely nowhere for us to put the garage except for in front of her house. Directly behind her house in the garage is a drop-off down to a stream or a river. I'm not really sure what it's considered. Wetlands that it did not contain to them, the Army Corps of Engineers, there's a letter in the documents that I turned in, has authorized us to go ahead and build the garage. So we're just asking you for permission because it's in front of the house.
Questions, comments from members of the planning board?
Why does it require a main core of the new year's rule?
Wetlands, tell me to call them.
Yeah, I'm guessing because it's a landsman hill, and the Army Corps has now basically classified all streams and things like that as wetlands.
So this would be further from the wetland than the house from the US?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
There was one, one question we had about the distance.
Yeah, I just, I took a look, you know, online at personal access, Dutchess County Parcel Access, also went to Google Maps. Dutchess County Parcel Access states that, you know, accuracy may or may not be...
Correct.
There, Google Maps is usually pretty accurate. Something seemed off in the distances for the 50 feet for the house and the 30 feet for the garage.
Mm-hmm.
When I measured that Google Maps, it seemed like the house was something more like 25 feet back, and that the garage and the house would actually line up. So, you know, I don't think there are any, I don't think there are any issues with what you're proposing to do, but it seems like something's not quite right in terms of what's going on in the site plan. And with the site plan as proposed, you'd actually have your accessory structure projecting in front of the existing principal structure, which as we know would then require a variance.
Well, actually, so...
They have an application for that.
To ZBA for that. I guess I'd just say, you know, maybe the, you know, the information was off on Google Maps, if you'd found it to be pretty accurate, but something seemed, it seemed like the two of them, the house is more like 25 to 30 feet where they were actually being, they were actually going to line up more than they are.
And they're not.
They're not.
They're not.
Okay.
It's going to actually look just like this on their property.
Okay. Well, if the house is 25 feet, that puts the garage 5 feet away.
You could actually put the garage behind it.
And I've actually been out there with a tape measure and measured from the white line back to where the rest of the garage came, from the middle yellow line back to the garage, as the Department of Transportation asked me to do.
Okay, so they're...
Yes.
Okay, it just, something seemed off.
Oh, I made sure I did all my little T's and D's.
So you're saying if you moved it back another 20 feet, you'd be going downhill?
Oh, we'd be down in the water.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right, then. We should put it there.
Yeah. Thank you.
Now, this is, I'm trying to make sure I have this right. The application for site plan especially used permanent. We're going to the ZBA to variance to put it in front of the house.
Correct.
And... What, what is that?
That's a good question.
I think what, because if you get the variance from the ZBA, then you have to give that to your manager, and it'll also cover the setbacks, anything like that. And so it could be your only accessory structure on this site.
No, which is it?
Second. Okay, well, you're allowed three, so... I'm not entirely sure that, he needs variance, but I'm not entirely sure that something he missed here, maybe, something I forgot to pick up on.
Turns out she's not supposed to be here.
Yeah.
I don't know, they told me to come.
It's not that you're not supposed to go, but exactly.
We'd be welcome to.
Thank you.
You're welcome to be here. I just don't know if you need to be here.
Okay, I can go home, because like I said, it's 14 hours, hurry the baby home. Yeah, I'm not sure exactly why I was sent here to...
Who sent you?
I was told by the building department that I needed to come tonight.
Oh, yeah.
The CEO went through this.
The board didn't say why?
He told me, no, they sent me a list of everyone I needed to bring, so I brought them.
We can do that. What I have here is the application for site plan that you approved. I don't know what's...
I guess I can review the project.
Sorry?
It's a private residence.
And it's not, it's not a story.
Nope.
It's not?
Shouldn't be.
Oh, you mean I could go home at 5 o'clock? I would have missed all this fun tonight, though.
Yeah, that's true. I got to be educated.
And I did, I learned a lot tonight from listening to everyone.
I'm still learning.
Well, that's a good thing. They say, why don't you stop learning, it's time to go.
What I'm going to do, just to be safe, I'm going to check, we'll have the resolution here to have you on for public hearing and whatnot, but let's, let me find out to make sure you have it.
Okay.
You do need to go to the ZBA.
Yes, yes, and I will do that on the 15th, that's scheduled.
And once you have their variance, I would imagine then you need a building part.
Okay.
That's what I think.
Okay.
But there's some, I just don't know.
Right.
We're going to have a resolution here.
If you want to resolve, there's no issue.
I'm resolving the question if I was supposed to go.
Is that what it is?
I don't know.
It's a resolution.
It's just an exception. She's wetlands.
The big question is if she doesn't have...
Oh.
She said because of the landmark.
What's it in?
It's a good water resource. An overlay?
Ah, there we go. Now we go out here.
Yep.
Thank you, honey.
Good thing you came.
Good thing I came.
No, it's a good thing Gretchen knows what she's doing, because I clearly know. Okay. I'm sorry? Is that, no, no, I saw, I read this, and it actually means something. Okay. So your time wasn't wasted?
No, it was not wasted. You know, I learned a lot, so...
Okay. Town Project Planning Board hereby access follows in the application by Cheryl Gourissee for site plan approval and special use permit under Town Code Chapter 125, Section 12572 and 12567 at 336 Route 308 in the RC5 World Countryside Zoning District. Accepts the application and supporting documents as adequate for initiating review by the planning board with advisors in public. Classifieds the proposed action as type 2 under secret for which coordinated environmental quality review is precluded. We're scheduling the public hearing on the application for June 3 at 6:50. At 6:50, and directs the clerk to undertake or otherwise cause noticing and posting thereof. Delegating planning board members?
You wore us out. Finally, finally, what is it?
Anyone else? I'll go.
I'll go.
Oh, good, Kathy's going to go.
We only have two more.
No, the boot is a dry fire. Yeah.
Literally.
All right. In accordance with Town Code Chapter 9 Conservation Advisory Board, refer the application to the Conservation Advisory Board for review and comment concerning environmental factors. In accordance with Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development 239 Planning and Zoning Referral, refers the application to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development for review, and authorizes without prejudice to any information or comment that may be presented at the public hearing or may arise based on both the above cited field visit and referrals preparation of a working draft or approvals resolution for consideration by the planning board on June 3 or as may later be timed. Very motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, and I will give you my name and my cell phone, so you can guarantee you to reach me. It's Mary. Are you on the record?
Yeah. Good report, right on your slate.
Okay. Our last presentation is Daniel Relia Gilmore.
I'll use that as a sound volunteer.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Looks so much better. I'm David Freeman, I'm here for the applicant. The owner had retained a landscaping contractor who had started construction of a patio, at which point it was determined it is too close to the stream, and that's why we are here tonight. So it is a Class C stream, it is not listed as a trout or a trout, whatever, TS stream, so it's a very simple Class C stream. We're 17 feet from it. It is a concrete patio with a blue stone paver that we are proposing, erosion, planting along the bottom edge. The patio was placed towards the south end of the property to allow the rest of the backyard to be open for play.
Questions?
How close is the stream?
It's 17 feet to the top of the bank. It's a, it's a, it's not a year-round stream.
And how far is it vertically to the stream?
About 10, 15 feet. So the stream, the stream is very channelized. So I have never, that stream has never come up over its bank at the very bottom. It's a, it's not a year-round stream per se, so even at this point in the spring, it is not.
It's not wet?
Running that well.
Really?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's...
It's an X stream.
Right, but it's still a designated stream, so it's still a X stream.
So, okay, I think the real key here from the discussions that we had is the plantings between the patio and the stream.
Right.
You know, there's appropriate area type plants that really secure that area properly enough as it does to prevent erosion, use that sort of thing. The patio itself, the basic, it's already reported, it's already there.
Is it exposed soil now? It has, is exposed soil, it's fencing around it? Yeah, it has erosion fencing to it right now.
So, 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 between the stream and the...
Right, and the stream, there's actually, there's very mature street, mature trees along that side of the bank anyway.
Okay, so there's, there's streams between the patio, I mean, there are trees between the patio and the...
And grass, yes.
The key thing, I think, what we're looking for is a plan, at least, that's the, really the site plan.
We're a landscaping contractor, so that's easy.
We'll see about that. Anyway, any questions or comments from the planning board? Okay, I have a resolution. The Town Project Planning Board hereby access follows in the application by Daniel Relia Gilmore.
Hi.
I know, isn't that...
My mistake, I'm sorry.
It's just, it's just so strange. For site plan approval and special use permit under Town Code Chapter 125, Section 12572 and 12567 at 287 Mill Road within the RA10 Row Countryside Zoning District within the LBRP Hudson River Store and Marstur along the Seaford Road. Accepts the application and supporting documents as adequate for initiating review by the planning board with advisors in public. Classifieds the proposed action as type 2 under secret for which coordinated environmental quality review is precluded, and we schedule a public hearing for the application on June 3 at 6:55, direct the clerk to undertake or otherwise cause noticing and posting. Okay, who's going to this one?
I'll go. I'm going to get so far away. I'll walk.
You want, you want to take care of the paperwork on this, or you want me to contact and all that stuff?
Who's going? What do you hear?
I'll go. Oh, what is going on? Oh, no, 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 I didn't wait one minute.
Okay, wait, you have three calls, who's going to do it?
Yeah, we're just neighbors, we border, we can both walk.
All right, being that you're both so close.
Women chair will do the site visit. In accordance with Town Code Chapter 9 Conservation Advisory Board, refer the application to the CAD for review and comment concerning environmental factors. In accordance with Town Code Chapter 118 Waterfront Consistency Review, refers the plan to the Waterfront Advisory Committee for review and review comment concerning consistency with LWRP. In accordance with Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development 239 Planning and Zoning Referral, refer the application to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development for review, and we're authorizing your precious data information or comment that may be presented at the public hearing may arise based on field visits or referrals preparation of a working draft or approvals resolution for PB's consideration on June 3, 2019. Got your motion to approve?
Removed.
All in favor?
Aye. Got to get a second, my head's down.
Got a second, okay. Very good, so they will be touched with the field visit. Now we have one more item here, which is a little sticky. And that is the ZBA referral of Stephanie Proctor for 14-foot area variance for rear setback and 289 square foot variance for accessory dwelling. Jim has looked into this, and it turned out there are a number of issues that have not been identified for this, his first time to the ZBA. Shall I allow you to...
I'm sorry, where are we on the intended...
We're on Cut Cupper, the ZBA referral. It's the second item on the first page of Jim's meeting. We did one of them, we didn't get to this one.
I said, come on, Harry.
No, it's the, it's the first page. It's right after the, it's the first, page number two. Page two, page two, I'm like, no.
This thing?
No, yeah. You want me to run through this like, quickly? So, so this referral came in, and when referrals come in, I like to take a look at Dutchess Personal Access to see what it looks like and make sure I understand what we're talking about. Typically, our referrals are the standard response. When I took a look at this one, I actually saw, based on the area, that there were a lot of accessory structures on properties. So I referred it down to Michelle, and Michelle took a look, and ZBA staff took a look, and it turns out that there were a number of accessory structures on the site that originally, when this was submitted to us with the material that you saw, would have had that exceed the 1,500 square foot maximum for accessory structures. Turns out that that has been revised, and they're, the amount that they're exceeding at 1,500 square feet, root area is now, I think, even higher, I believe. Anyway, it's amended, an amended application. I think the zoning enforcement office also found some other outstanding issues with the property that needed to be looked at. Building inspector, I believe, went out, or is going out, to take a look at what's going on. So there are a number of issues that kind of came up related to this. They're now applying for variance for 14-foot backyard setback, 435 square foot variance for accessory dwelling, and 2,406 and a half square foot variance for total accessory structures.
How many square foot?
2,406 and a half.
And a half?
Over the 1,500 that are permitted.
And what figures the parcel?
As well as the five accessory structures. I don't remember off the top of my head, but I can pull it up.
Big, big little...
That's kind of relative, isn't it?
Well, 100 acres is big.
No, it's not that big. No, it was six, just over six acres. So what we have is this structure, if you can see my little mouse on the screen, that they're proposing to turn into an accessory accessory structure. There's a platehouse over here, there's an existing barn over here, there's apparently a shed over here, and a greenhouse here, there's another accessory structure here. So all in all, they have a number of things they're now going to the ZBA for. So I noticed those, I referred them, they're being taken care of, and I think everything is being handled as it needs to be. I think the planning board needs to decide what response, what to submit back, I guess we need a response. Is this still on the agenda?
Question or no?
I think that's still a primary question.
Okay.
With the ZBA?
I think so.
Based on what we can... Sorry, I'm sorry. My intent was going to be to understand there are a number of issues and the number of variances that have been requested, and we refer to the ZBA to use their judgment of the application and refer back if necessary, something to that effect. There really isn't much for us to do, whether they recognize that there are a number of issues, and we understand that they've worked on.
But we're not in a position to comment.
Or not in a position, yeah, whatever you're comfortable with.
I think I'm in a position to comment, other than what you just shared, which I knew you tried.
It seems like this is one of those situations where you have to go and look. I mean, it could be that this many accessory dwellings in the great position, contours of land, it works, and it's not a problem. Secondly, it's, as Valerie said, without going and looking.
Is that based on site length? Is that our major criteria for accessory structure?
Well, the planning board is asked to make a recommendation due to the ZBA, and we haven't gone to the site, we have no idea of how this all looks. The ZBA will go.
Who sent them to the ZBA?
The planning board.
Who sent them to the ZBA?
Zoning, they sent it to us.
No, the ZBA did.
ZBA sent it.
And they're on the agenda, so they made a...
It's more important than...
But they sent it before all these other things came up.
And Gretchen said they are still on the agenda.
And it says for four variances.
And then apparently a couple of CLs with C3.
Yeah, that's...
Well, I recommend we get all that information, Gretchen. That's my recommendation.
And from a planning standpoint, we're not in a position to say whether or not there's a, there could be planning issues at this point, given the information or the lack of information we currently have. Would that be, would that be... We have a resolution to effect that having reviewed the information given, the planning board feels we do not have sufficient information to determine whether there are any planning issues related to the variance requests for this project, and therefore we would like to defer making any recommendation to the ZBA until we receive further information that we feel is adequate to make a reasoned recommendation, something to that effect. Very motion to approve?
Second.
Just a question. The way that's phrased, that doesn't stop the ZBA from proceeding.
Neither does our, neither does our recommendation.
Thank you, Rachel. Not except I'm ready and they straight. Stands as a recommendation.
Basically says handle it.
So for a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Anything further? Got your motion to dismiss?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
We're good to go. Thank you all very much. And Ben, what do you think?
I got a question for you.